Do we have sign up sheets outside, JJ?
Yeah.
Okay. Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to the September 12th Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting, and ask if you have pagers, cell phones, or similar devices, if you would either turn those off or silence them now, we would appreciate that. If you are not the applicant, and you are here to talk to us about a case today, there are sign up sheets on the table outside the chambers, and if you complete one of those and hand it to our clerk here, we would be happy to hear you when the case is heard. Our first order of business is to approve the August minutes, excuse me, July 1st. Two people were gone, we can't do the July minutes. How about August? I wasn't here for August, and Bob wasn't here for August, so we can't do those either. Continue those till next month, sorry. Continuance requests. We have five uncontested requests for continuance today. Item 57 is PUD 1504. Item 58, SP 460. Item 59, PC 10355 will all be continued until September the 26th. Item 60 is C 6494, will be continued until October the 10th. Item 61, PUD 1502 has been withdrawn. Anyone here today to talk to us about the cases that Russell just read? 57 through 61. If you are, come up to the podium, please.
Do you want us all to come?
I can't hear you.
Do you want us all to come to the podium, or just one of us at a time?
Well, depends on if you have, all have the same thing to say, or if you have something different.
I think each one of us has a little bit different thing to say, based on our experience so far.
In that case, give us your name and address, please.
My name is Kimberly Heaton. I live at 601 Shamrock Circle in Yukon, Oklahoma, in the Shirely Village addition. And I'm here today to talk to you again about the proposed development on Trinity Baptist Church property in connection with their application. And I was opposing the continuance as well, based on some of the same reasons, but primarily because we're still continuing to receive misinformation, and I feel like misinformation's been given to this planning commission about this project. You asked the developer at the last meeting, I was the only homeowner here, and you asked them to come back and meet with the homeowners and try and alleviate our concerns about the development, which is going from agricultural to commercial, retail, and also duplexes. And I objected at that meeting, because we were told it was for church complex expansion in the notice that we received, and senior housing. And so what they were asking for was not what they announced to you. I was the only neighbor out of 40 that I've spoken with, that received an invitation to meet with them about their plans. The other neighbors didn't receive anything. I arranged for a meeting with Phil Hagan, with Crafton Toll, who said he was representing Trinity Baptist Church on this application. And he came to my home. I invited my neighbors. About 25 to 30 of them were there. And they heard from him. First of all, he didn't bring plans, because there are no plans other than what they filed with you. He said they were waiting for the rezoning before they filed the rest of the plans, before they do any plans for development. Another thing he told us is that a small portion of the land, right down next to the fence where the duplexes were going to be built, were owned by an LLC, they were not actually owned by the church. We asked if the church owned the LLC, he said no. I found out today, in speaking with the executive pastor of Trinity Baptist Church, that Phil Hagan actually is an owner in the LLC. I don't know who the others are. But I feel like that's very misleading. First of all, they're not rezoning only church property, they're rezoning this LLC property as well, as part of this zoning application, filed on behalf of Trinity Baptist Church for their property. So, we were listening, he did not tell us this information at the meeting, he just said, "an LLC." He also didn't tell us that they own other property in the front of Trinity Baptist Church, that I believe is part of this zoning application, if I understood the pastor correctly. And I feel like that's very misleading. As far as the continuance, I didn't have any trouble reaching the neighbors. I didn't have any trouble reaching the property owners, and as you can see today, they're concerned about what's going on over there, and about what's being proposed, and what's actually going to be done after they get this least restrictive commercial zoning, almost, that you can get, and duplex approval. And so we oppose the continuance, because nobody tried to reach anybody, except for me, because I was the lone challenger at the last meeting. We propose, we oppose the development as well, and I don't want to speak on behalf of all of them, they have their own reasons. But I can tell you, I object to it, not only because we were provided inaccurate information in the notice, we were provided inaccurate information in the meeting we had with the developer, and we're still not getting, what we're being told is, "Oh, we'll change it." And I learned, as I got here today, that they filed some paperwork evidently, to do away with the duplex portion of the application. I've not seen the paperwork yet, so I'm not sure exactly, you know, what they're proposing. But, I know that the back of the church, and where the church sits, from looking at your records at the planning commission, is already zoned, a really restrictive kind of commercial zoning. And as I talked to the pastor today, he seemed to indicate that they didn't really need this commercial zoning that was for anything, McDonald's, or convenience store, or whatever, that they just needed some office space, and, you know, they might have a shop, a bookshop or something in there. And I told them, "Well then, why are you asking for this free rein for commercial retail right next door to all of our properties? Because it's probably, all of it's probably less than a few hundred yards from my house." And I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about what a major commercial retail operation will do in our neighborhood, where we already have significant water pressure issues. The city has thankfully installed a new pump that helped, so that the water does come out of our faucets now, but it still isn't good. It's still to the point where some of us have to go and pull our sprinkler heads up, so that it'll sprinkle the yard, on the days that we can do that. So we have water pressure issues, and we're concerned about a lot of housing or retail operations right next door, where it might draw on that and make it worse. We're concerned about the traffic. It's a two-way street on Cemetery Road, in front of the church and in front of our neighborhood. It's our only access out of there, is Cemetery Road. And already, it's difficult getting on and off of it, because it's two-lane, there's no light. So we're very concerned about that. We're concerned about the traffic, the trash, the lighting, everything that comes with commercial retail, and especially on the level that they have proposed doing. So we're asking the planning commission to please deny their request on their application, deny their continuance.
Let me see if there's anybody here who represents the applicant on item 57.
Good afternoon. Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll. And unfortunately, I don't know the particulars of this. Our company has been involved in it, and I personally have not to this point. Obviously, Phil Hagan met with the folks previously. I was not a part of that meeting, however, I do know that we have, since that meeting, made changes, significant changes to the application. For instance, I think it included some duplexes that we've now dropped out, as a result of some of the concerns, and so we've resubmitted that to staff, and we'd asked for continuance. We'll make sure that they get all the information that's needed, and hopefully hear it next time. And I do believe that it was mentioned at the meeting, that our intent was, was to continue it, to take the concerns into consideration, to make some changes, and to proceed forward after that. So we'll make sure that they get the information, and ask that it be deferred.
Okay, thank you. It sounds like there is an amended filing, and that may be the reason for the continuance. And that, I can't say whether it reflects the changes that you've asked for or not, I mean, we haven't seen it here. But, the applicant's not ready to go forward with it, and our staff hasn't reviewed the revised data that's been submitted, so there's really not a way we can hear it today.
We have submitted a petition, and I believe you all got a copy, you were supposed to, with the 35 or so names on it so far. One thing that I'm concerned about is, if they amend the application, is anybody else going to get notice of that, or do I need to go out in the neighborhood again and say, "Hey, they're going back again"?
Kendall, what are you going to do to notify people?
Actually, what we will do is, we'll just set up another meeting, and we'll take the revised document, and we'll meet with them again, explain to them our intent, and what we're trying to accomplish. So, we're willing to do that.
Mr. Sherman, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Just of the staff. Part of our difficulty here today, as a commission, is that this has not really been fully prepared for us to review. And my question to staff is, why that is? Is it because they have revised their filing, and there just hasn't been time to do that? Why, I guess I'm asking, if one side is requesting a continuance, but we don't know whether that's acceptable to the other side or not, why is this one of the ones that we have assumed will be continued?
They requested it before we prepared the staff reports. And they have made a new filing that we didn't have time, or they've amended the PUD they did file, and we haven't had time to review that for this meeting and prepare a staff report.
Okay.
There's really nothing to look at for this meeting.
Well, let me just say a couple of things. One, we don't like continuances any more than you do, because we wind up studying these staff reports and revisions, meeting after meeting. But I also want to say that we understand that it's a hardship to come down here more than once. People have jobs, they have to take time off from work, they have to get babysitters, I mean, there are all sorts of arrangements people make, in order to alter their lives, in order to be here to participate in discussion on an application, that's important to them. And so I want you to know that we recognize that, and we appreciate it, and appreciate your doing it. What I'll say is that, I'd like that meeting to be had, and be prepared to go forward on the 26th, without another request for continuance from anybody. We need to hear this item and move it along.
Well, and the question I have is whether there's enough time, whether a two-week continuance is enough time to do that, to get whatever needs to be done, to work up the revised filing, and to get information to the neighbors, and to have-
The filing date tomorrow, JJ, for the meeting on the 26th? 24th, what, on the 26th?
We have the revised PUD.
Right, it's an amended one, it's not a new application.
It's not a new application.
But even then, I don't, what's the next meeting, after the 26th?
October 8th.
10th.
10th.
We would be fine with October 10th. And then that way, that'll give us ample time, we'll meet with them, make sure that we've done the best that we can do to explain the application, our intent, and we'll move forward from there.
How many times has this been, is this the third, or the fourth time it's been continued?
I don't have it in front of me. Do you know-
We tried to put it on the last meeting, I think, is my understanding, and it was continued from that meeting, to go meet with some-
So from the last continuance, you've made major changes?
I believe so, yes. Like I say, I don't quite honestly know all the particulars, but I believe that there, what is tract two, is a piece of duplex, or the underlying zoning, and I think that has actually been amended or dropped from the application.
Is the next meeting going to be good enough to get back with these people, and show them what you're going to do?
That's what I'm saying, October 10th would be, that's two meetings from now, that'll be more than adequate time, yes.
Okay. So, I'm not going to be willing to continue it again.
Understood.
And I'm only one vote on here, but that's plenty for me.
That was my point, Jim, is when we hear it, next time we hear it. And that goes for me, too. So, do you have something to add?
My apologies, I don't, something that-
Give me your name and address.
I'm sorry. My name is James Cross. My address is 609 Shamrock Circle.
Thank you.
Something that you may not be aware of, in what they're, in tract two here, there is a gas well owned by Quinton Little Company. I contacted them, and they knew nothing of this project. Also, the farmer that owns the property just to the north, he didn't know anything about this either. So it's not just the neighborhood, there's a gas company and a property owner, a significant property owner, that, they tell me they knew nothing of this. So there's not just a matter of our few little voices here, there's also some additional, some additional property owners to be addressed.
Okay, thank you. Well, if everyone's on board, we'll amend the continuance to take item 57 to October 10th, and that'll be a change to what Russell read.
And with that amendment, I move for the continuances.
Okay, well, something else?
Well, pardon me again, I just, I, it seemed, Monday night and today also, it seems like the Crafton Toll people are under the impression that if we, if they change this zoning issue in tract two, that everything's going to be okay, and we're not okay with this comprehensive C1 zoning they're asking for. So it's fine to do this amendment, but we're still going to have an issue with, I mean, this whole thing is still an issue. So I don't want the impression that, okay, we're doing one thing they've asked, we're going to, we're going to take care of this, that's not the only piece.
That's fine. Yeah, well, we'll take that up on the 10th of October, and-
Sorry, we're sorry for the inconvenience. I mean, the inconvenience is you, and again, we understand that, and we appreciate that it's a difficult thing for you to be here.
The only reason we went ahead and came is because of the reason stated in the motion for continuance, which we felt like was not true. Because there were 40 of us, and one of us got a request to come and look, or that they would come to my house and bring plans and discuss them. That's the only reason we objected to the continuance.
Well, Kendall will take that message back to his boss, and we'll sort that out on the 10th.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. We have a motion to the second now, for the contingencies, cast your votes, and it's contingencies as read, with the one change. We have multiple new requests for continuance, so bear with me on this, I'll try and be as quick as possible. Item 8 and 18, that's CE 835, and item C 6456, request to continue until September the 26th. Item 19, PC 10349, and item 20, C 6485, have both been withdrawn. Item 25, CE 855, continue until October the 24th. Item 27, PC 10347, continue until October the 10th. All the remaining items that I'm going to read will all be continued until September the 26th. These are 37, S P U D 727, item 38, P U D 1507, item 39, P U D 1492, item 40, C 6454, item 41, P U D 1506, item 42, C 6513, item 43, C 6514, item 44, C 6503, item 45, C 6515, item 46, C 6502, item 48, P U D 1505, item 49, C 6493, item 50, C E 862, and item 51, P U D 1503. That was a long list, and I hope you followed it, but we have the same question. Is there anyone who came to talk to us today about any of the items just read? It's eight on our agenda, 18, 19, 20, 25, 27, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41 through 46, 48 through 51.
I'm Ms. Swank, 3601 North Classen. I'm here regarding item 44 and 45. We do not oppose the continuance, we would just request that it be put off until October the 10th. The neighborhood is having some studies done, that will not be done by the current suggested postponed date of the 26th. So as opposed to coming in and requesting another continuance, we would just ask that it be put off into the October 10th, as opposed to the 26th.
Okay. Anybody here on behalf of the applicant, item 44? Brian?
Brian Coon, if you, as always, representing the applicant. This project you've seen in different forms before. A year ago, a flood study was reviewed by an engineer that the neighborhood hired, and he approved it. This flood study has been approved by your staff, it has gone to FEMA, it was approved by FEMA, with a conditional letter and map amendment on July 19th. We feel like they've had every opportunity to review this report for a year. I think it's just another tactic to slow us down another couple of weeks, and it is, time is important, time is money. We'd like to move forward. This, our application was actually turned in, the deadline to turn it in was July 29th. We turned in this application on July 3rd. That means it's been here for over two months, and we're, we knew that we were away early. But the application has been on file for over two months. The neighbors all got notices of it, the people that are asking for the continuance got notices at least 20 days ago, and they're getting another 14 days now to review it. And again, your staff has already approved the flood study, I mean, it's been through a lot of review, and it was approved by FEMA also. We would ask that we not be continued another two weeks on top of this. This was, this continuance was because the traffic study hadn't been reviewed yet, and that's been in over two months. So we would like to move forward, we think that's adequate time. It's, again, he's not redoing the flood study, he's reviewing it, and it's already been through plenty of review. So we feel like, and they have already had that done once by their engineer that they hired. So we'd request that we can be heard on the 26th.
Commissioners?
Can we ask what studies they're waiting on? What are the studies that you're waiting on?
I'm going to tell you, I'm in a severe disadvantage. This is not, this is really Eric's case, he just advised me of that. I know traffic, okay. She's actually going to know a little bit more about it, but I'll also tell you that the, my other concern, in addition to the flood study, is having just looked over this, literally this morning, apparently, I do know the case was in litigation, so as far as us trying to stall it out, we weren't the ones that went to litigation, it was initially denied. It was originally for over 1,000 lots. The staff had advised that additional roads needed to be put in at Phase 2, which was, I think approximately around 300, or 60 or so lots. In the revised study, they came back at 370 or so, with none of the recommendations of the road issues, and I know staff has requested an extension, I noticed it was only for two weeks. But, the, the traffic in addition to the flooding is a big, going to be a major, major issue. According to the staff report, that actually was denied all the way back in June 14th, they went again June 13th, and I'm sorry, the June 14th was 2012, the June 13th was 2013. In 2012, they noted that the current traffic volume in 2011 was 6,580 cars. They projected, they indicated that when it hit 7,000 cars, that they recommended it to be traditionally extended to four lanes, as opposed to two lanes. They also estimated that the Phase 2, and I keep going back to the Phase 2, because that's where the staff was on the report, could increase it by 3,000 cars, which would put you well over the limit. So, in addition to the flood study, we'd also like some time to look at the revised traffic, and also what the city is going to be saying on it, and potentially talk to them, because our clients are across the street, the proposed development is going to be emptying directly across from them, and so that's just another concern. They've put in a lot of time and effort trying to work with them, and the main thing they've been trying to seek is a connected road out to, I believe it's 164th. And again, I apologize, because I have not had much time to look at this, but-
Okay, we're delving really deep into the case, and the question is, are we going to continue it or hear it? So commissioners?
I've got a question. You know, it seems like that we, all of a sudden, we've just got a rash of contingencies. Is it because the applicant is not getting prepared before they put the application in, or do we not have enough staff to look the things over? Why are we getting so many? I mean, we got, we had 20 contingencies today, and it's getting worse and worse. You know, our stack is getting worse and worse. I don't understand, maybe, maybe the staff can answer that question, I don't know.
If we could, just maybe, I understand your concern, because we have the same concern. On this case, though, the issue was, and you'll read it in your staff report, is because the traffic study has not been reviewed yet. That's the only issue. We turned in everything we had to, over two months ago. A lot of the things she brought up had to do with the last case, this is a brand-new case. This has nothing to do with Phase 2, it has nothing to do with 164th, and for her to say that, "I just got this this morning," I'm sorry, but it's been in for a long time. We've made every deadline, and two weeks is fine, but we think that they can review this case in two weeks.
It's been three months, this has been going on for three months, and we still don't have a-
The question is not whether we're going to continue it or hear it, the question is whether we're going to continue it for two weeks or a month. It's one or the other. We're going to continue it, one way or the other, it's just whether we're going to continue it for two weeks or more than two weeks.
My feeling is we continue it for two weeks, in deference to the neighbors, and get done with it, and we hear it in two weeks. That's what I feel.
The neighbors are actually requesting it be a month, and like I said, I apologize, I'm not representing that things haven't, I just don't have any personal knowledge of the case, and it hasn't been my case to handle. That's, I've been advised to ask for a month continuance, and I was just pointing out what I saw, just in the brief time that I was trying to get myself up to date on it.
Okay. Your name and address, please.
Jenny Masian, address is 14405 Fossil Creek Lane, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. It's been mentioned that we had, previously had the flood study reviewed, which we did ask someone to look at it, but it fell substandard from our expectations, only in that, we found that the review consisted mainly of verbal conversations with the designer and others involved. And so we have felt an urgent, urgent need to have it further looked at, with the actual studies being, and the parameters that were used, and so on, be actually researched. I do have copies of a letter that I got from the engineer that we have asked to review it, and in this letter, he said that he can have, have it done by early October. We have tried multiple times to recruit someone to do this in the area, and we've run into either extremely heavy workloads, we thought we had it assigned out a couple times, found out there were conflicts of interest, and so it has been a difficult procedure. And if this is- And if this is, if this is now continued another two weeks, that will not allow us this time. And yes, I know time is money to the developer, but our homes are more than just money to us. Our homes are homes. They're an important factor. And two more weeks to see what this flood study has, I feel like is extremely reasonable request from us, all of our surrounding neighborhoods. This isn't just a few people, and as far as knowing that this was in for several months, no, we did not know that. In fact, until the agenda got posted on the website, we did not realize that there were going to be two applications set forth regarding Lonoke East. So it's kind of come by a surprise, and then because we're covering multiple neighborhoods in our communication, it's a, it's a little bit of a timely process. So I'm not asking for this to be denied at this time, although I think it's got serious, serious problems even as submitted now. But all we're asking is for an additional two weeks for the, for the engineer to complete the flood study, and then dependent on his findings, findings, to have time to meet with the Public Works Department officials and, and go over those findings. So that's all we're requesting at this time.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Four weeks or two?
Mr. Chairman, just for, just for the point of reference, this has been continued, what, three times? And who initiated those continuances? Was it the applicant or the protestors? Do we know?
Well, this, no, this continued, this is the first continuance because the traffic study wasn't approved. And again, the comments that you heard earlier had to do with the case that you heard over a year ago on the huge thing, remember?
Yeah. But this is the first continuance on this?
Yes.
Okay, and you're requesting that?
Yes, yes, and you know, there was an email went out on the nineteenth to all the neighbors, July nineteenth, talking about all these things. So it, it wasn't just when the agenda came out Friday or Saturday. There's no, public notices went out. They've had, I think they've had time. Again, your staff has already approved it, FEMA's approved it. We'd like to move forward on the twenty-sixth. We feel like we've done what we need to do. We've answered the questions. You know I will make any information available to whoever wants it if they would like to review it.
The only, the only thing about this that gives me any hesitation at all is the fact that we're hearing both, the preliminary and the final, and you know Commissioner Gales hates that.
But not today, you're not hearing that.
Right. So the question I guess I would pose to you is, what if we continue this one two weeks and continue the other one a month? So that you have, so that they're not heard on the same day? So that if there, if there are issues that they're not able to resolve by the time we hear the preliminary plat, they'll have those extra two weeks before the final plat is heard?
Okay, can you give me a second to answer that question?
Yeah, absolutely. I move then that we leave the continuance list as it is with respect to item forty-four and change the date for the continuance for item forty-five to October the tenth, is it? To October the tenth.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. And that's approved only as to those two items that were read.
Thank you.
Now, on any of the other items that were read?
I didn't get an answer to my question a while ago, and I think, JJ, maybe you can answer that question.
I can answer part of it, and it has to do with the number of commissioners today.
But because of the continuances?
I think that, I think that causes certainly some of them, because as applicants learn that we're going to be, we have several commissioners who are traveling on business today or out of town.
They, how would they know? How would that be part of it? Because I've got, I got my agenda last Friday.
Well, a lot of these continuances have come in in the last twenty-four hours, is my.
Well, some of them, yeah.
I mean, the ones we knew about on Friday were the five you saw printed, and then the rest have come in since that date.
A few are technical items. This one was the, the traffic, but Chairman's right. I mean, we get a lot of phone calls asking who's going to be absent, who's going to be at the meeting, and it's the makeup of the commission today is the reason most of these items are continued.
I mean, if you want to pass a variance today, there are six of us, and if one person doesn't want to pass the variance, it doesn't pass. I mean, there are those kinds of considerations on cases that are, involve those kinds of details. Yes, sir? Okay, give us your name and address.
Bill Kouts, C-O-U-T-S, one twenty-six, twenty-five, Southwest one hundred and nineteen. I'm at a loss here. About three weeks ago, I received this notice of hearing from Mr. Gary Owens to rezone a one hundred and seventy-six point twenty-nine acres to two acre tracts. My first thought, well, going with that, then two weeks later, I receive another notice, or a week later, another notice for nine twenty-six, another hearing on this to reduce this to one acre tracts. Well, I've lived there forty-three years. I live right across the fence from this property, and our, my first concern was, we don't have that kind of water out there. It's a farm area. I talked to different people around, and Carol Hannah lives across the road on one hundred and fourth from this property. She has cattle. She was having a problem last year watering them, and she called our local Mustang Drilling, Waterwell Drilling Company to come and listen to the noise she was getting in her well. Of course, she figured what it was, and probably you do too, but he came, and sure enough, when she was watering the cattle, the well was sucking air. Also, across the road, she was telling us that when the neighbor there was watering his garden, that she and her mother would get buckets and put water, fill up their buckets where they, make sure they had water. So there's not that much water in this area, and it's so ridiculous to even talk about one acre, I mean, two acres, and then get down to one. It doesn't even make sense because there's not that much water out there. I know I drilled my well forty-three years ago, and I only got about ten, twelve gallons, something like that. Well, I understand Mr. Owens has drilled three or four wells on this property, and they, up the top of the hill, the property goes like this, and I understand he got around ten or twelve or so, straight across from me and a little more down below, but it really concerns me because we've had a water, a pretty wet season, and had a drought these other years, as you, as you well know, but we're quite concerned about that many people being put on this property there. He's asking the first time eighty, and then we jump it up to one hundred and sixty? It doesn't make sense. And again, we're a rural area, stop signs, two-way streets, as you're all familiar with, in the country. So we're quite, you know, concerned about this, and that's why I came down here today to, to let you know how we feel. Any questions?
No, we understand the water issue.
That's our main issue. And also, we have a septic tank thing. On the west side of the property is a spring-fed creek runs through my property. I think of the sewage type thing. The other side, on the east side, you've got a creek over there. So you put that many people on top of a hill, it all runs, you know, either, either side. It concerns us. So that's my.
Thank you for being here. We appreciate your comment.
Thank you, sir.
There were two people signed up on item fifty-one. Are they here? The item is, Bois? Michael Bois?
Sir, I'm Mike Bois. I live at three hundred East Platt Drive. I'm actually a Yukon resident, so I'm kind of behind the eight ball here. We haven't received anything, although I only live four blocks away, maybe even last three blocks. We haven't really received anything, in my addition, concerning this, so please understand that I've had to rely on input from others. I have also been to a meeting that was held by my neighbors and the developer at a local church. Really, a lot of my concerns to this point, with the limited knowledge I have, is that the, the signal lights in that area already, according to their traffic study, are servicing some twenty thousand cars. They're talking about adding another fourteen thousand cars. They're saying with the twenty thousand, it gets an F grade anyway. The representative from the developer at the church said that it currently gets an F grade. If you introduce that much more traffic to an already failing signal system, it's not going to work. I don't know how many of you have been out in that neck of the woods lately, but there's significant highway work going on. Pretty much all of us have rerouted that know the area. My wife and I come home a different direction so that we don't end up on that exit ramp backed up to Tukum Carrier, clean to the turnpike. So when the developer told us that the traffic study was done in July, well, that means it was done during a time when that, that construction was going on, and a whole lot of traffic has rerouted and trying to stay away from the area. So if it gets an F now, what would it really be had we not, most of us who know the area, rerouted? Additionally, they're talking about to this point, and I don't know if there's been any new filings, again, I haven't gotten anything, but there was a discussion about a four-story apartment complex. If indeed it is four stories, I do have some intimate knowledge about what kind of fire protection is around that area. The only station even close is Thirty-third between, I mean, Southwest Fifteenth between Mustang and Check Hall Road.
We're kind of doing what we did the last time around, which was getting into the case as opposed to the continuance.
I, I just, okay, I don't mind the continuance. I understand that, but I'm, I'm kind of like Mr. Allen, is that your name, sir? I, I understand his attitude and yours when you were saying we all have to take off work. I had to turn in a time card so that I could come down here today, and I think over time, as you come more and more often, the numbers dwindle, there's less people that are able to get off over and over and over. So that's an issue. There's a host of reasons why we would, why I would oppose this, but I don't know if the commissioners could direct that the communications that are going to Oklahoma City residents, that actually some of them that live further away than I do, could you direct them so that they come to us just, just right across the road? That would really be beneficial because if there are some accommodations made, I don't think anybody would be opposed to single-family residential development of that area. So sticking with the continuance, that's, if we're going to continue it, fine, but I sure hope that we won't do it on and on and on.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we don't limit our communications just to Oklahoma City residents, do we?
No, they're entitled, anybody's entitled to come and talk to us.
Well, but limiting community, the question Janice has is, do we notify people if they live across the?
We do notify the joint jurisdiction.
So if you live within the notice area, you should be getting that communications, and if there are things that are to be communicated by the applicant, those should definitely be coming to you as well. The fact that you live in Yukon has nothing to do with it. If you're, if you're in proximity to this development, you should be getting those communications.
And if I haven't been, I have been calling the developer and informing him of that because I'm here with one of my neighbors, and it's my understanding he lives two doors down from me, and he hasn't received anything. So it's not just me, it's mine.
Right, okay, well, I think the message is that that communication should go out to the appropriate radius regardless of municipal boundaries. Sir?
My name's Dwayne James. I live at one thirty-two Snowmass, Yukon, Oklahoma. It's on the same issue, item fifty-one. There's a lot of problems, and I won't go into that, it's about the continuance, but I'm just wanting to make this the last continuance because I took off work today, I paid the park, everybody does that, and they're wearing us down where we can't be here to voice our opinion. So I'm not in opposition to that, I just want whatever they set the next one at to be the last one.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Motion on the additional continuances.
I move approval of the additional continuance.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Are there any continuance requests from the public today? I hate to ask the question, but I did.
Not as much as I hate to come up here and ask. My name's Roland Tagg. My address is one hundred North Broadway. This is on item twenty-three, C sixty-four eighteen preliminary plat of Palmero Place Edition. I represent Wen Holbrook, who is the receiver of the oil and gas interests. We met with the applicant after the zoning was approved before the city council, and there was a, this came on once before, it was continued, we met with the applicant. Part of the proposal that the oil and gas interests have in terms of development of this area for oil and gas purposes is to drill several wells in one place on the plat that would be close to, would be next to Western. The applicant asked us to move or consider moving it away from that more high-priced commercial property over to another part of the plat. We had an engineering study on the feasibility of the location that we were going to use, so that meant going back and re-studying this other location. We've done that. It's not, the study is not complete. It's going to take another forty-five days. We'd ask that this be continued so that we can complete that, discuss with the applicant what would be necessary to do this, how the plat might be reorganized because of that, and that's the request.
Now, is there, just before we hear from Dennis, who's standing there, is there a commitment at this point that that work will be done in forty-five days or fewer? Is that outside?
Yes.
Just so commissioners understand that that's?
If that is not, I won't be here asking for a continuance, but I've been assured it will be completed.
For the record, Dennis Box, on behalf of the applicant, with regard to the forty-five days, I want to make sure this commission is aware, this is a preliminary plat, and we, we are thankful that Mr. Tagg's study will be in within forty-five days, which will allow us to work with them and make any modifications we need to for our final plat. But if we hold the preliminary plat up forty-five days, that is just delaying for purposes of delay. We recognize that we need to and will work with Mr. Tagg. Bob Gum is here. He is a lawyer that specializes in oil and gas. He's been involved from day one, and so from our standpoint, we would like to proceed with the preliminary plat, and we are mindful that when we get to a final plat stage, there might be modifications that will be required based on whatever studies are out there. So we would hope that you would at least entertain the preliminary plat today.
Commissioners?
Can I ask a question, I guess really of staff? If there are changes required because of these issues that would be significant changes to the preliminary plat, would we, would we rather see the preliminary plat wait on that or, or, I guess I don't, first of all, have that much of a feel for what kind of, how significant those changes might be based on the location of a well?
It's very hard to say that we know what those changes are. If they're extremely significant, we'd want a new preliminary plat submitted.
JJ, I didn't hear the last part. You said if there's significant changes, you'd want a new preliminary plat? Is that what you said?
Or revise the preliminary.
Because there are a lot of lines crisscrossing that track because I've looked at it. We don't know. that track, because I've looked at it, we don't know which lines are in use, which are essentially abandoned, would need to be cleaned and plugged, and would be of no impact on the preliminary plat, that's just an unknown. So we could get a preliminary plat that doesn't change much at all, or we could get one that's going to look quite a bit different.
Right.
And we understand, and I think this is probably the most important thing, we understand that if a determination's made that we've got to do significant changes on a final plat, then we're not going to be standing in front of you saying, "Will you approve the preliminary plat? We want you to approve the final plat just as it is shown today." But I don't see the need to delay this for 45 days. We're mindful of the oil and gas issues, and we'll continue to work with Mr. Tagg, and we've got our traffic engineer here and Bob Gumm, and on the record, I'll just say if this commission determines that our final plat needs to be modified based on oil and gas issues, you will not hear us arguing that you approve the preliminary plat, therefore you have some obligation to follow just what the preliminary plat said. But that allows us to at least proceed forward and do some of our engineering and get things in order to proceed with a final plat and continue to work with Mr. Tagg.
Could you submit your preliminary and your final plat together?
We, no, we will come in with a final plat just on a section, a small section of what you see as a preliminary.
Are you willing to give them 45 days before you come in with a final?
Yeah, our final will not be before this commission within 45 days. It is not even, we have not filed it yet, correct? Yeah, we've not even filed our final plat yet, so that's the answer.
Chairman, I appreciate the arguments and understand what quiet is that you'd want to do that, but a preliminary plat is a preliminary plat, and in view of the potential significant revisions that would be required based upon Mr. Tagg's engineer and analysis, and the other letter from Hall Estle about another oil and gas operator, that this is ridden with oil and gas well locations, operational issues, et cetera, and that I think it's absolutely way preliminary to approve a preliminary plat when it might be turned on its head when you finally figure out what this requirement is or that requirement is, and I think it's a wrong precedent to approve a preliminary plat with that many contingencies in it. So my motion would be to continue this application for 45 days or whenever it coincides with the meeting that fits in within the 45 days, and I would so move.
Does Mr. Bright's motion have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? That would be October 24th, I think. Is that right? Any further discussion, commissioners, before you vote? Okay, the motion is to continue this item for 45 days. Cast your votes. My vote didn't record, there we are.
We'll hear you on the docket.
Three to three, it's heard today. Okay, Chris?
I'm here for item number 30, C 6521, the final plat of Colony Point. There were several TEs concerning Memorial Road that I just learned about at the first of the week, I've been in contact with staff, trying to work those out, we haven't come to an agreement on that. I was kind of wanting to talk about it with the planning commissioner today, but I noticed Commissioner Hensley's not here, it's in his ward, so I think it would probably be better to continue it for two weeks at this time. Thirty.
Okay, commissioners, any, that would be to two weeks from now, the-
Twenty.
Twenty-sixth? Twenty-eighth?
Twenty-sixth.
Yeah. Is there anyone who objects to continuing item 30 for a couple of weeks?
Move to continue item 30.
A motion and a second to continue item 30 for two weeks, cast your votes, and that's approved. Any other requests? Consent docket, Russell?
All right.
Moving right along.
Five items on the consent docket. Item one, C 6505, item two, C 6518, item three, 6517, item four, C 6106, and item five, C 6512.
Is anyone here today who came to talk to us about items one through five on our agenda?
Move the consent docket.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the consent docket, cast your votes, and that's approved.
Okay, we're on items requiring separate vote. First item is item six, B 13-5803, it's an application by Tracy Jamison requesting a variance to subdivision regs to permit a certificate of occupancy at 7109 Southwest 105th Street, Maria Di Bella.
Good evening. Tracy Jamison, address is 7416 Southwest 105th, I just live right down the street. For the variance, for the conditional, for the occupancy, they have not finished the swell for that side of the neighborhood. The house is complete, I built it myself, everything's been inspected, everything's been finalized, only thing I'm waiting is so I can get a certificate of occupancy for the mortgage and title company, so I can close and move the family in.
This is our favorite neighborhood, commissioners, we need, we're voting on a variance to grant a CEO approval of our-
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item six, cast your votes. You're approved, thank you.
Item seven is SN 078, this is to consider a resolution changing the name of Robinson Avenue to Thunder Drive between Reno and Southwest 3rd Street and Ward 7.
I'm Karina Henderson, 11th North Robinson, representing the Thunder, just here to see if anyone had any questions or concerns that we can address.
The thing is to change the name of the street for one block, as I understand it, or two?
I think it's about a three-block stretch.
Three, down to 3rd Street?
I'm sorry, down to 3rd, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want this comment to be in any way in degradation of this marvelous basketball team, but the changing of a name to Thunder Drive reminds me of where this team came from, and probably there's a Sonic Drive someplace in Seattle, that they're real sorry that they've renamed that street Sonic. Things come, things go, and I just, I think the change of a name for a franchise that's just wonderful, no question about it, but I just don't, I won't support this. A just change of names of streets is just something, I think, that shouldn't be done just because it's popular. I'm sorry.
Yeah, just for our purposes, if I can address the topic of concern, you know, this didn't start out as an exercise to change the name of the street, this started out as, we're moving our offices to the arena, and we were not sure how we were going to get our mail. The address for the arena currently is 100 West Reno, which doesn't really show, if you can look at the map, Reno Avenue is not where our office main entrance is facing. We're actually facing Robinson, and so when we were talking with people from the arena, people from the city, on how to secure an address that would make it easier for us to just do business, this idea of securing a name that would also just give a platform for our brand, as well as to kind of, as we have said in our application, celebrate the deep ties that have formed over the last five seasons between the Thunder and the community. You know, it's something that we pursued because it was something we were honored that people would approach us with and ask us to consider, and so we, you know, are, we definitely understand your concerns, but for us, you know, we need, we do need an address of some sort, this is kind of how it played out from there, and so this was not just something where we came in just looking to change the street name, just to give you context.
Well, I understand the branding and the idea, and I think it makes sense, and Bob, if the team moves, we can always call this formerly Thunder Drive, so there is a solution. Any other discussion?
No, I'm not, no, I'm not opposed to it, but the location downtown is not going to be one that where emergency vehicles are going to get lost or anything, so I move that we approve this application.
We have a motion and a second to approve item seven, cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight has been continued, item nine is S P U D 725, application by Yassine Atari to rezone 200 North McCormick Avenue from I-3 Heavy Industrial, S P U D 725 and Ward 3.
Hi, good afternoon, my name is Yassine Atari. I was here the other day, and Mr. Gay has recommended that I speak with Mr. Buck Irwin, and we contacted Mr. Irwin, and he reviewed the file and everything, and he didn't express any concern. Unfortunately, I, we received an email yesterday from him, he said that unfortunately, I won't be able to make it to the meeting in order to vote, but that's all he said, he won't be able to make it today. I was supported by Mr. Hensley the other day, Mr. Allen, Mr. Ehlers, and Mr. Bright, but the other day they were not like enough voters, so that's why we came back here today. I have files for the area, just for more clarification, and I'm fixing to give a few introductions for Mr. William and Mrs. Powers, she was not with us the other day. I just have some pictures for- Those are the pictures from the area where I am, where I'll be building, it's an I-3 Heavy Industrial. My business is moderate industrial, it's not heavy, it's moderate. I spoke with my neighbors, didn't have any concern, I spoke with Mr. Gary Stowe, he's with feed the children, I gave him the plans and everything, I told him if you have any concern, call me. He's okay, he never called back, so, and I spoke with the manager of Shikasaw Telecom, he was here, he was okay with it, he was just concerned about the traffic, but he said I'm okay. Anyway, this is a recycling facility, provide valuable service that contributes to our environmental quality of life through the recycling of auto parts and scrap metals and conversion of natural resources. This program is designated to prevent pollution by implementing best management practices, we call it BNP, in the industry by minimizing the generation and the release of waste and increasing the competitive advantage and improving the efficiency of the business operation. BNP are used to reduce waste through better work practices, material storage, and other process management techniques. After I opened my business in first year, couple of years, we're looking to get certified by automotive recyclers and be a member of the Automotive Recyclers Association Gold Seal. The ARA members take pride in the quality of their work, reputation, and the path they sell. They generally go above and beyond what is required for certifications, such as Certified Automotive Recycler CAR or Gold Seal, and comply with federal regulations and on the environment, hazmat, and other areas of management and marketing. I do have Mr. Sean Axon, my surveyor, if anybody has any question, and I have my architect here, Mr. Andrew Siemens, if anybody here, and there's Caitlin, Ms. Caitlin Depsy, she's here on my neighbors on behalf of Mike, he's out of Michigan, but he sent her, he sent her here to speak on his behalf.
Quite a lineup. Any questions of the technical people, first of all, surveyor or architect?
I have one, just general question.
Sure.
We have a similar plant, Reno, and like Eastern, I'm not sure if this is the same thing, but it's a car crushing process.
No, we're different.
I know, it's recycling, but I saw that they're going to compress the cars too.
We're a little different, we're lighter than those guys, those are very heavy, those are big company, we're lighter, we're just small business.
And we'll make sure all the oil and all the pollutants are taken out, make sure they don't get into the ground soil, we've got all those precautions in place.
You do compress them, all right, then you shred them?
We might do that in the future, but we just do one car at a time, it's not like big, the company you're talking about, Eastern and Lincoln, those are huge company, those, we send them the cars, actually.
Okay.
That's, we hold the cars on the rollback and we send it to them.
That's where we get those sonic booms from, and it shakes the neighborhood and everything, empty the gas out of them. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we've heard this and read, I mean, last meeting, I think it was, was that right?
Yes, sir.
And I think that it was deferred or something like that with one or two votes, you know, on the commission.
Right.
And my only comment is, is this is I-3, surrounded by I-3, it's where these facilities should go, and the facilities that you're putting together, with all the materials that I read last time and this time, seems to me that you have got your act together to do a heavy industrial type of operation with what you're going to do, and so I approve, I move approval of the application.
Second.
We have a motion and a-
I've got one question maybe for the staff, why isn't this a special use permit?
There was two reasons, one, he was varying the parking just a little bit, and altering the parking surface for the storage area to use, utilize gravel. So he needed-
So it's not, I mean, it's going to be completely restricted to automobile crushing or-
Yes, it's I-3 with the additional use of the scrap operation.
So if it was anything other than vehicles, then it would be a special use?
Yes, it's limited to the vehicles.
Okay.
I have a question as well, are you in agreement with the technical evaluation?
Technical what, I'm sorry, ma'am?
Yeah, the technical evaluations on page seven of the staff report, in particular, I guess, the signage I'm concerned about?
We're fixing to, she's asking about the plan, are you asking about the plans, ma'am, right?
No, I'm asking whether you are in agreement with the technical evaluations that are set forth on page seven of the staff report.
I believe-
It says you will not use EMD signs, that you'll use eight inches of cement kiln dust overlaying with five inches of dust-free asphalt millings or, and so it's talking about your paving requirement, basically.
Yeah, the paving on the front, on the parking, it's concrete, and on the back it's like four-inch compacted, everything is within specification. The sign is not a pole sign, it's a stand, standing sign, and on the back is like four inch, at least four-inch compacted concrete, gravel.
So you understand that those are the requirements, it's-
I didn't, I'll be honest with you, I didn't understand very clearly what she asked for, but we did everything here.
We will comply with whatever we're told.
That's the question.
Yeah, we will, sir, I assure you.
Yeah, just in the back, the only change in the back is going to be just like four-inch compacted gravel, that's the only thing we changed, but I believe everything else is within specification.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve item nine, cast your votes, and you're approved, thank you.
Thank you.
We'd also like to thank the staff who worked with us on all, throughout this project.
Sure.
Mr. Gross and Mr. J.J.
Chambliss?
Mr. Chambliss, very helpful, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number 10 is C 6489, this is the preliminary plat of Rockwell Village, Ward 8.
Good afternoon, Kendall Dillon with Craft and Toll, representing the applicant, and this is a preliminary plat on 20 acres, approximately quarter mile south of Northwest 150th, on the west side of Rockwell. We got 78 lots, we're in compliance and conformance with the existing zoning, we got eight standard TEs that we're in agreement with, and would ask for your approval.
And no one signed up. We have a motion and a second to approve item 10, cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Item 11 is ABC 791, this is an application by Smokehouse Associates for an ABC 1 at 315 Northwest 23rd Street and Ward 2.
Mr. Lauer, another venture, huh?
Yes, indeed.
Give us your name and address for the record.
Chris Lauer, 1732 Westminster Place.
Thank you.
We are opening a restaurant, have opened a restaurant that, incidentally, we want to serve beer and wine, and we actually share a building, we're under the same roof with an existing ABC 3 overlay, it just didn't extend to our side- an existing A.B.C. Three overlay. It just didn't extend to our side of the building, so we request that we, we're only looking for A.B.C. One for our, for our half.
Another positive addition on 23rd Street, where lots is happening. No one signed up.
I move approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 11. Cast your votes. There you go. Thank you.
Good luck.
Item 12 is A.B.C. 792, an application by Karina Esquada for an A.B.C. Two at 1222 North Pennsylvania Avenue, Ward Six.
Pull the microphone down and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Karina Esquada, E.S.Q.U.E.D.A. My address is 2136 Northwest 11th Street. I came in here on behalf of my parents and their restaurant. They opened two months ago. They're applying for the A.B.C. One alcoholic license. They have a Mexican restaurant, and they just want to provide just alcohol to their customers so they can enjoy their Mexican food. Down the street, well, in the same building, there is a bar already, and we were told that they had already one, but in our building, because it's just remodeled, we had to apply for one, so that's what we came for today.
I'm fine. Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 12. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Item 13 is S.P.U.D. 728, application by Aaron Rawley to rezon 1407 to 1409 Southwest 10th 19th Street from I-1 and AE2 to S.P.U.D. 728, Ward Seven.
Good afternoon. My name's Aaron Rawley, 3019 West Wilshire Boulevard. I'm representing Mr. Kiroz in rezoning this property.
You're in agreement with the technical evaluations?
Yes, sir.
No one has signed up. Commissioners?
Move approval of the application.
Chairman, I have a question about TE number four. I agree, I mean, no freestanding accessory or non-accessory signs in this. S.P.U.D. Attached signs should be in accordance with the base zoning district. It doesn't say anything about an EMD sign. Are there EMD signs in this property? And if there's not, I'd like to have the addition that added to TE number four, no EMD signs. These are electronic motion signs.
No, there's not. I'm okay with that.
So I'd like to add that to TE number four. I modify my motion to add that, no EMD signs. And then, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second amending TE four to include no EMD signs. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 14 is P.C. 10354, an application by Richard Thompson to rezon 1616 Southwest 82nd Street from R2 Medium Low Density Residential to O2 General Office in Ward Five.
My name is Richard Thompson. I live 2332 Tuddington, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, and I'm here representing Oklahoma Baptist Home for Children. They currently have three lots on Southwest 82nd Street in the 1600 block, and two of those lots are zoned O2. One of is zoned R Residential, and they'd like to change that third lot to office zoning so they can add a 1600-foot addition to their building, so that's why I'm here today.
Commissioners, no one has signed up. Move approval. We have a motion and a second to approve item 14. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Item 15 is C.E. 864, an application by the Loydano-Machlin Trust to close Northwest 76th Street between North Hudson and North Harvey and Ward Two.
Jeff James, 3000 United Founders Boulevard, representing the applicant.
Mr. James, does your client own the property on both sides of this strip?
They own the area that it shows as office, and they own the whole south area. The area where it says office to the east is owned by another investment company.
I'm sorry, so the, on the northwest side where it says office there, you own that?
They own that.
They own all this property to the south?
All the property to the south.
Have you been in contact with the people that own the property to the north, directly east of you?
We've made several attempts.
But haven't been able to contact them?
We haven't gotten any response. I know, I know in the past that they hadn't, had not wanted to sell it either, and so I think the way that they're looking at it is, is they're glad that they're not the ones making the application.
Perhaps. I don't have a problem with it. I assume there's nobody here to be heard.
No one signed up.
I don't have a problem with this. This is, you know, this area is, has a lot of these streets that aren't really streets, that have never been used or opened, and although I'm not a big proponent of closing streets, this, we do this out in this area fairly routinely, so I'll move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 15. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Item 16 is B.D. 203, an application by P.B. Odom Jr., Westland Development Specialist and 89th Street Petro Partners to dedicate three street and utility easements on the South I-44 Service Road, south of Southwest 89th Street and Ward Five.
Good afternoon. Tim Johnson, on behalf of the applicant. This is a street that was installed to allow access to this tract of land that historically had been cut off by the construction of Interstate 44. The only legal access they had was a 20-foot easement that was granted by ODOT. Many years have gone by since we began meeting with ODOT to get permission to gain access across their portion of their right-of-way at 89th Street. We negotiated with the Sinclair property owner to the east and got some easement from him, and then the street plans were prepared, and the street's been in place for probably close to two years. In the original ED application, we understood that the Sinclair owner would allow us to move his driveway from 89th Street to the new street. Once the street was started, he said, "No, I don't want an access there," and so that's why this ED is back before you, is we would like to eliminate TE number four. We've talked to traffic management staff, and they're okay with that deletion. Otherwise, we're okay with the other TEs.
Commissioners, no one signed up. There is a variance to TE two.
Just to be real clear, Tim, the owner of the, it shows here as a convenience store, has two drives on 89.
That's correct.
And originally, you had intended to move at least one of those over-
To the new street.
But it would have been right there anyway, wouldn't it?
Correct. It would have been within his property, yes.
And, but he's decided he doesn't want to do that?
Yeah, once the roadwork was started, he became a little less friendly than he was when he granted the easement.
May I ask that?
The House Commissioners?
I'll move the variance to TE two.
With a motion to approve the variance to TE two, cast your votes. That's approved.
And then move the application, sorry, move the variance to TE three.
TE three, we're, we're going, P. Four, we're deleting.
Yep, okay. Motion and second, the variance to TE three. Cast your votes. That's approved.
I'll move the application, deleting TE four.
Okay. Motion to approve item 16, deleting TE four. Cast your votes. Thank you very much.
Item 17 is P.C. 10342, an application by Deer Creek Park to rezon 4520 South Sarah Road from AA Agricultural to I-1 Single Family, Ward Three.
Good afternoon. Kendall Dillon, Craft and Toll, representing the applicant, and this is an application for a parcel of property that's generally 107 acres. It's located just a little bit north of Southwest 44th Street on the east side of Sarah Road, and your comprehensive plan for this area is designated as urban growth. Our intent, obviously, is to build a single-family residential subdivision. There will be water and sewer, so we are, if you look at the development pattern in this area, you have multiple residential subdivisions, there's Sarah Park addition immediately to the north, Castle Brook Crossing, Brookstone, South Point, Morgan Run, so that's the pattern of development in this area, so we feel like that the plan recommends it. It's consistent, compatible with what's going on. Staff recommends approval, and we'd ask for your approval.
Commissioners, no one has signed up. Traffic management says we need the installation of a traffic light. Do they really want to talk about that?
Who pays for them?
That's the problem, isn't it? No one has signed up, Commissioners.
Who pays for them?
That's a good question.
Because if you do this, then taxpayers that live on 100 block of Northwest 10th are paying for your traffic lights.
Well, and my response to that, too, is if this applicant pays for it, we pay for 100% of improvements to signal that benefits everybody around, and everybody contributes to it, so I understand, and we've been through this issue. What I will say in regards to traffic is we've done the traffic study. We recognize that there's a problem there. There's a TE on the preliminary plat that we've agreed to, we're asking to continue it today. We are and will, with the preliminary plat in association with that technical evaluation, we're going to agree to make some improvements to the intersection. What we're going to do is we are going to ask for some lots to allow us to have one phase before we have to make those improvements. We feel like that's going to be, considering that we're bearing the full cost of that, that that's a reasonable request, that that gives us the ability to jumpstart a neighborhood. The first phases are always very difficult, and financially, they struggle to make work. We feel like that's an acceptable offer, and so we will do that with the preliminary plat, but today, we'd like to go forward with the zoning.
That's what we'll hear next time.
Exactly.
No one signed up. Move.
That's, that's all the clout that we have. It's just we just talk about it. There's no impact fees. You know, that's the end of it, right?
Yeah, next time. I move approval of the application.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 17. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Item 18 has been continued. Item 19 and 20 have been withdrawn. Item 21 is P.C. 10352, an application by Elite Construction to rezon 11749 Southwest 15th Street from I-1 Single Family and P.U.D. 1141 to R2 Medium Low Density Residential, Ward Three.
Good afternoon. Steve Rollins, Arch Engineering Consultants, representing the applicant. We have read through the staff report in agreement with all their comments. If there are any other questions or comments, I'd be happy to address those at this time.
No one signed up, Commissioners?
We've moved to approve the application.
Isn't it the same question? You know, the study concludes that traffic signals needed at each intersection. This is the traffic study, and isn't it the same question? Who pays for it? Who pays for the civilization at the intersection?
What are you looking at?
Twenty-one.
Huh? Oh, not 18?
No, 21.
Oh, okay. Never mind. So we have, we have a motion. We have a second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 21. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Had you worried the...
Yeah.
Item 22 is C. 6511. It's a preliminary plat of Shadow Edition, Ward Three. Panion item.
Again, we have read through the staff report in agreement with all the TEs. If there are any other questions or comments, I'd be happy to address.
No one signed up on this one, Commissioners?
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 22. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Item 23 is C. 6418, preliminary plat of Primo Place, Ward Five.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I know you'll give me a fair hearing, and I think an explanation will help you all understand why we wanted to have the preliminary plat approved. There are a couple issues. I believe, and I want to make sure I'm correct on this with the staff, I think the traffic issues have been resolved. Is that accurate?
Okay.
When have we not given you a fair hearing, Dennis?
Well...
Just checking.
You'll always give me a fair hearing.
That's right.
It's just that I think it'll, it'll become clearer when Mr. Gumm explains the oil and gas issues, because we understand we have obligations, and we're going to live up to those obligations, but there is a, at least one, maybe two areas within this plat that we don't think will be impacted at all based on the oil and gas in the line, so this will allow us to go ahead and proceed to get a final plat proceeding, and we will continue to work with Mr. Teague. So I would like, if you all would just indulge me for a minute to have Mr. Gumm come and speak to you and explain, based on the plat that you see on the screen and is in your staff report, the oil and gas issues that we're dealing with on this plat.
If you would give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Bob Gumm. I office in the High Tower Building there at Main and Hudson. I'm an oil and gas lawyer here in the community and have been for a number of years, and the applicant has hired me to give him some, some guidance as to what he needs to do to accommodate the interest of the oil and gas developer in this situation, and I'll more or less restrict my comments to that, to what I've seen. I've tried to bring myself up to speed with respect to what this oil and gas operator seeks to do and his needs. It's the kind of business I'm in every day, and Dennis, Mr. Box is correct. If you look at the area that's subject to this preliminary plat request, there are areas that, based on all the information known at this point, do not appear that there's any likelihood it will be impacted by this study that's ongoing. We haven't identified any lines. There are no existing wells. There are two alternatives being studied for the production plat, for future production or impacted. Neither one of those tracts are going to affect these ones that we think will be unimpacted by this study and what we're going to learn in the next 45 days. If we can proceed with the preliminary plat, as I understand it, although I'm really not a land use lawyer, it would permit the client to go ahead and file a final plat on those areas. It won't be a problem for any, for the oil and gas developer. What we really have, we have oil production. There's two wells. They're kind of in this, on either arm of the east and west arms of this proposed plat, or this proposed development. They're served by gathering lines which run north through the plat, proposed plat, in one way or the other. We know where they are. They're going to have to be moved. My client's going to have to pay to have those moved. That's a known. The question is, are we going to, exactly where are they going to be moved to? And that's going to depend upon where the oil and gas operator ultimately decides to place his production facility and his, his production pad. He wants to accommodate the possibility of several horizontal wells that would underlie this property at depth, but all be drilled from one 10-acre site, and he's considering, is that site going to be in the northeast corner of this property, or at much less expense to him, in terms of what he will pay for surface damages, is he going to move it over here more or less to the, to the west side, to the northwest corner of it? That's what's being studied right now, the feasibility of that. That will cause those lines to be either redirected to the northeast corner or the northwest arm of the development. That's, that's known. It's just which way we go is what's not known right now. Obviously, that will affect, could affect portions of this plat to the north, but it won't have any effect on what we're looking at in the, let's say, in the southeast corner of the property. That's not an issue. We know those two wells are going to stay there. They have to be accommodated. We know there's going to be a road to give them access. It'd be from the east or the west. We know that's going to have to be done, but none of that will be involved in what I think the client intends to propose as its first final plat. That will, that will wait until we see what the oil and gas operator ultimately wants to do, and so it's really, I think, will be a fairly tidy process. I don't think there will be, based on all the meetings I've been to, I don't think at the end of the day, there's going to be large disagreement between these people. It's just a question of timing and accommodating one another, and I'm staying ready to answer any questions I can, but I think that pretty well outlines where these fellows are.
I do have a question, and what's the spacing unit requirement for this particular property? What's been authorized by the Corporation Commission?
That's an interesting question. This actually is a part of a field-wide unit. That's an order that was put in place by the Corporation Commission many years ago to accommodate water flooding. That's what's going on out here. When that order gets put in place, it vacates all the spacing orders. There are no spacing orders that impact this production at this point in time. With a unitized unit, the operating committee, representing the various owners in this multi-square-mile unit-
Right.
-can place their wells pretty much as they see fit, subject to your Board of Adjustments' input.
Wherever they want, right?
Slightly.
Yeah. Yeah. And then, have you read the Hall Estle letter?
I haven't seen the Hall Estle letter.
It was attached in, you know, part of the materials that were received, and he represents Amcon Resources. Don't know, they own the unit. And there are his objections. There are hundreds of mineral owners in the unit pursuant to Oklahoma law, the rights of these oil and gas owners to explore and/or exploit their ownership interest. It really cannot, as you know and I know, it can't be ignored. The mineral owners have priority over what the surface can do.
Right.
But this is a letter of protest that Mr. Glover of Hall Estle sent in May of 2013. And of curiosity, have you made contact with Mr. Glover of the Hall Estle firm?
To my knowledge, no. The individuals that have been representing the oil and gas interest in this case are those people who represent the receiver who was appointed for the unit. The unit's in receivership.
Right.
He's the party that stands there now with the authority to negotiate and to make provision for future development. He's hired an engineering firm to identify what he will propose to the unit be accommodated or be considered. There's no guarantee that any of this will ever get done.
That's true.
They're trying to hold the door open to accommodate these opportunities if, in fact, the unit decides to go forward.
Oh, yes. The question is, with Mr. Tag, I assume Mr. Tag doesn't represent, what's the name, Amcon Industries, right?
He represents the receiver.
Huh?
I represent the receiver.
You're the receiver part, you know. So at any rate, what with his, what he's doing with what this, you know, Hall Estle person is protesting, it gets into just the matter of the mineral owners have priority over what you do on the surface. We know that, you know.
Yes.
So what can be developed or what can't. It seems to me to have this done as you want it to be done. There has to be a real, you know, pretty tight agreement between you guys and the mineral owners before you know even where to, you know, put your shovel in the dirt. That's my, I mean...
And that's what we're trying to arrive at right now.
Yeah.
I think it's a question of, let's see if we don't agree that part of this property right now is, in all likelihood, won't be impacted by that. It's not, the engineering study that's already been done is, on behalf of the mineral owners, has identified their first choice as to where they would like these facilities, and that's up in the northeast corner.
And see, I agree with everything you're saying, because, you know, if this is a water flood operation, well, you put a well in, and then you inject water, and it does this, and so it's not one that's a banana, you know, Eureka discovery. It's an old field that has some secondary recovery potential, and whatever that is, is, who knows? You know, but they still have the right to do it.
They do.
So I don't know where you put a street. That's my point about the preliminary plat versus what the final plat's going to be as soon as the receiver and his work is done. And that really is, that's my whole point, is that I think that this might be an exercise in juggling cats until you're ready to put it together.
I think, Commissioner Bright, if you, if someone could raise the exhibit slightly, in the two arms of this, east and west running, is where the existing wells are, and there's an existing road, well, I say road, it's a dirt road.
Right.
How they gain access now. My client is well aware, those wells are never going away. It is clear that his ultimate plan will ultimately have to accommodate access to those properties.
Whatever, right, they have to.
So we know where that road's going to be.
Right.
That's not going to change regardless of which corner the operator decides. So I think, I think the roads are pretty well-known. I think the real unknown is, is where do we move the existing lines to, to accommodate that existing production? And then these fellows, if they pick this corner or this corner, they'll use those same alleyways for their, for their, what lines they need. If you understand, they're bringing, the new production will bring everything back to the wellhead of the new wells. It's just one consolidated place.
Yeah, right, right. Okay, that's all I had on that presentation.
Does anybody have any other questions than Mr. Gumm?
Thank you all.
You want to hear from Roland?
Yeah, I want to hear from Roland.
Before you start, can I ask a question? I know absolutely nothing about oil and gas law, but did I understand all of that to mean that they can spend all the money they want to, to develop a preliminary and final plat, but they're not going to be able to do anything that impacts the rights of your client? Period? Can't do it?
Janice, probably there's a duty on the part of the mineral owner not to just get in the way, but they have a reasonable right to produce it. It requires lines, existing lines. Some of them are used, some of them aren't, and I'm not sure they have identified those. They know some that are used, but there are others they've found. So they, you know, we're willing to work with them in moving the lines out of the way, which would help them develop the property. We're willing to work with them on access. But if you will let me tell my story, maybe.
Can you see all those lines, Janice? Okay.
My name is Roland Tag, 100 North Broadway, representing Wynn Holbrook, the receiver. And Bob, just for the purposes of explaining how Wynn got there and what this is all about, is that there's a mortgage, a mortgagie that commenced foreclosure action on the unit. They had a mortgage on the unit, at the whole unit. It's 37, parts of 37 sections of land are in this unit. And the unit was formed in 1960. Probably these wells were drilled in 1950 sometime. So there's also a second mortgage. And those two parties are in conflict, and that conflict has gone on to the Supreme Court. When that conflict is resolved by a Supreme Court decision between the mortgage holders, the whole thing ought to move forward. Somebody will buy it, take it over, and run the unit. And it could be soon, it could be, you know, six months. There's no predicting. But while this is pending, they appointed Wynn as the receiver. He's got a duty to attempt to produce, keep the production going, and so forth. And they've hired an operator, they being Wynn, has hired an operator who is operating all of these wells. And he's the guy that's commenced the study and so forth. But to explain some of that, this is sort of a poor man's exhibit, because this yellow portion has been removed. At the time, this went before the city council, so the plat is what is left, other than the yellow portion. I just didn't get their more modern plat, but the lot lines and so forth are the same. The red lines that you see are identified lines. You can see they go through here, across, there's some here, and the wells are here. And this is the one that has the pump jack. I showed you all the last time I appeared. And this is shut in. It's not closed or abandoned. They would use it for injection well or something like that. So they don't have any intention of abandoning that well bore. The study that you've heard about is an oil and gas engineering study that was done. It was commenced by the receiver, and it is on this area up here. It actually extends over the property line onto the property of an adjoining owner. And that study has shown that they can produce oil and gas off of drilling from that area. Now, Mr. Gumm is the expert. He could tell you more, but they tell me that they'll drill multiple wells in that area. They would drill, slide the rig over, drill, and drill, and drill, but they would all be produced from that area. And we know how that would work and where the lines would be and so forth. This is a section line corner, so that's pretty valuable land. And when we, there was a meeting, there were meetings years before, or before the property was purchased by the current applicant, and we thought it was going toward resolution. And when dollars came up, quiet came along, and that was the, they bought the property and filed their application. And as you all know, mineral owners don't get any notice of a surface application, so we just discovered it somehow. And that's how we got here. When we met more recently, after the zoning was approved by the city council, and we met, I believe, in either late July, early August, the suggestion was made, instead of using this area, why don't you move down here where you've already eliminated some lot usage, and put your new drilling in this area? And so we commenced, it takes another study to determine whether that will work. There's a lot of technicalities in the study, but they're working on that, and that's the reason I asked for the 45 days, is to finish that up. You can see there would have to be lines laid and so forth. The way this unit is written, and it says that the oil and gas company, or the oil and, the unit, has a blanket easement over the whole property, and that's recorded. There also happens to be something that's somewhat unique. Across here in brown, which you can't see, is a road. And this is apparently a recorded easement for that road. So, you know, they can't force us to release the easement for the road. We're willing to work with them on the blanket easement or something to do with the road, but it's just a dirt road, and it runs right past, right past into this well. Now, if they're going to bring drilling rigs in to drill over here, how do we get there? Well, Blackwelder runs along here, and if you drove up Blackwelder, you'd see that right in this low spot, there's a bridge. But instead of the bridge going north and south, it's got a little twist to it. It's not, two cars would have a hard time passing, and I don't think you could, I mean, here's a layman's opinion, I don't think you could get a drilling rig across that bridge and down here. I was told that a workover rig is 100 tons. Now, that sounds like a lot.
How deep are the wells? Do you know how deep the wells are?
I don't know what the, I don't know. I don't know what, how deep the existing ones are. I know you go out here and you'll see the thing pumping, then it stops, and it's on some kind of a timer system, and it pumps some more, but I don't know. The new wells, I don't know whether they go down to new production or where they're headed on the new wells, but they know that this will occur. And it will occur rapidly if we can get the legal issues on the mortgage foreclosure done. So my point to you is that, to me, it seems premature to plait it, because if you just make a big enough area there to handle the existing well, there are anchors on all four corners, they're 95 feet from the center of the well. OSHA will not allow a truck to drive under those anchors. So a workover rig or some truck that's coming up with pipe has got to get around the anchors. So it requires more than two times 95 in terms of width. And I think most people think it's about 300 feet that you've got to offset. The city says that, I think, they're going to be required to put a cul-de-sac here, or if this is developed, you have to rework this. Another issue is that a workover rig is 100 feet high, and you've got to have a fall area. You don't want to put a house next to that. Another issue is, right up here are four big, large tanks that are in use. And there's a pipeline that goes out here with a connection, but I think most of the time, the trucks pull in and unload those tanks. Now, the question is, do you move the tanks down here with the new operation, or how do you do that? So there's, I think that the plat is going to be severely changed when you get to that point. And preliminary plat seems to me to have cart before the horse. You know, we've got to be here protesting, because if we don't reach an agreement, somebody's out there with a backhoe digging and digs up a pipeline, we've got to somehow stop them. And we've done that over here. There was somebody who started a house, and it was within that fall zone of a well that's located over here, and now there's just a concrete slab, not even slab, the stem wall is poured and a bunch of extra rebar, because somebody got over here and got it platted. And I'm probably not telling you all anything. You've probably seen lots of these plats where, in this area, where you, the oil and gas interests and the surface interest are having problems.
Do you think, Roland, that this would be resolved pretty, with specificity, in 45 days?
I think that we'll be able to tell them feasibility of whether we can move it over here, and I think that's probably in the best interest of all the parties, to give them their commercial land to develop, and we don't have to pay for commercial land for surface damages, and we can pay over here for the surface damages.
Okay.
So it's, it's just a lot to swallow. I mean, when I brought this map up to show you before, I didn't have this line drawn in, and in the meantime, they've given me a new map with a new pipeline. Mr. Gumm said, many of these operators don't know where their lines are until there's an oil spill, and they discover there's one there, because they didn't apparently keep good records. So I...
What is that existing house on the preliminary plat?
There are houses all along...
There's a house off the west. Just kind of, you should draw a line.
Over here. I don't...
I'm looking in the area that shows the house, just to the southeast of that school.
Well, now, you know, the Carmelite sisters had their facility right here. But it's not a house, it's a pretty substantial building. It still exists. They were the owners of the property before it was sold. And I think the applicant owns that.
Yeah. Dennis's client owns that, I think. Isn't that right?
Pardon?
Your client owns that northeast corner, right?
Yes.
Yeah, where the school was.
Yes.
Any questions?
Questions to Roland before he... Thank you, Roland. Dennis?
If I might, this might make it a little easier to see the existing wells. And I think it's important to note that this is not a unique situation in Oklahoma City. In Oklahoma City, we recognize that their rights are superior in regard to the wells that you see. We're going to have to accommodate them, and we will. This shows you that... This shows you that, based on the existing wells, if we can get a preliminary plat approved and then file a final plat, then we'll be in a position to move on the portion that's not affected by the, the wells in question. The future development, as you all know, has to go through the Board of Adjustment, and the Board of Adjustment will look at, analyze, and determine where, if in the future they wanna develop, where that will be. I think it's, as Mr. Teague represented, they're probably looking at wanting to move this over to here, based on the surface damages that they'd have to pay, based on commercial property. But that's all speculative and in the future, and, and we, we have no idea when or when. Somebody will drill additional wells. In the meantime, we would like to be able to proceed on those areas that we know will not impact the wells, and that's why I wanted you to see this exhibit. But more importantly, I wanted to make sure and reiterate, as Mr. Gumm said, we recognize the, the rights that exist in this area, and we will work around them. Whether you're dealing with subdivisions like Oak Tree, Surrey Hills, subdivision that I used to live in, Blue Stem. When I purchased a house out in Blue Stem, across the street was an existing pump jack and a well. And by the time I purchased my house, the party that operated the well got there with paved streets. Years in the past, they got there on a dirt street. So, what we don't wanna have happen is just be held up until the Supreme Court makes a decision, or, or, you know, issues are resolved between mortgage holders. We, we recognize their rights, and we will live with them. We would just like to be able to proceed, and so on the record, we recognize the rights they have. What you'll see is, we'll work around those on our final plat, which will be small in nature, and it will allow us to come in and develop some of the lots and get the process Does that raise any questions? Do you all have concerns?
Any further questions?
Dennis, I'll put the same question to you that I put to Roland and Teague. Do I understand all of this to mean that you can go spend all the money you want to and come up with plans all day long, that you won't be able to actually do anything out there until this issue is decided, and they know where there're gonna be wells, and...
No. What it means is, we cannot do anything to negatively impact their ability to operate those wells and get to those wells. And in the future, when they wanna come in, and if they decide that this is the right site, or if they go to another section of land in close proximity, wherever they go, they'll have to work with the surface owner. And in working with the surface owner, they'll come to an agreement in regard to where they wanna drill new wells, if they ever do drill, drill new wells.
So, it's really, from where we are now, about protecting the existing wells. They have to have access to them, they have to be able to operate them, so on.
Correct.
All this stuff about where they're gonna be later, and that just, we don't know any of that.
We don't? And we recognize, we have an obligation to make sure they can continue to operate the wells that are out there, and have access to them and lines provided that...
But you don't have any obligation to accommodate whatever they might decide in the future? I mean, that, that'll all have to be worked out when and if it happens.
Right. I mean, they, they, they'll have to come to the Board of Adjustment, and they'll have to file an application, price of oil drops in half, they might never do anything. I mean, it's just all open. But we recognize, based on what Mr. Gumm said, if they did come and say they wanted to drill additional wells on this site, that they would have the right to, if the Board of Adjustment said they did, and then they would have to pay surface damages, find a location, and go from there.
Why is it that we're looking at a plat that has lots and streets and so forth shown over these existing well sites?
Kinda like the, the home that I had in Blue Stem. When I moved in, there was a pump jack and they were drilling, and then within six months, the, the well was gone, and, and there's a home on it. So...
Gone, gone?
Gone is in moved away, environmental remediation done, and, and an individual built a home. Goes on all over the city.
Okay.
Dennis, what about the impact of all the piping that we saw on the other map, where piping was going all through? How do you, how do you deal with that? What's the impact of all that piping that's, that we know is there now?
Right.
One offshoot of 60 years of development is a lot of, a lot of flow lines. They're not large lines, they're buried lines that were used to haul small volumes of product. And as they become obsolete, or the patterns of development change, they're abandoned. Most of these lines are empty. Most of them will just be tagged on either end, they'll be vacuumed out to make sure there's nothing there, and they'll just always be there. Those that are active are being identified now, those will have to be, in effect, relocated, so they're not running under people's properties and whatnot. That's what these, if they, if they wanna reserve this and, and for future development, then this would be the proposed route of rerouting those lines rather than directly through here. Those will, those will be gone. Does that answer your question?
But when you say relocated, you don't actually mean dug up, do you?
No. They'll, they'll be, they'll be purged, they'll be capped on either end, and new ones will be laid. These are not great big pipelines, these are small.
They're gathering lines, basically.
Yeah. I was concerned about the active lines, because they couldn't build over those.
And some, some of these, at this point, because those, at least those two wells are active, could, there's gonna be active lines across that property right now, but...
They, they are.
A lot of what we saw probably hasn't been used in decades.
Yeah. I was just saying, how do that affect the active lines?
Is that accurate? You cannot build over the active lines? If there are lines out there that are being used, you can't build on top of them?
I don't think anybody would, would suggest it would be reasonable to build over an active flow line, because over time, they deteriorate. It is no joke, a lot of my clients, that's the only way they know where some of their lines are, is when there's a leak, it starts to puddle up, and then they realize that's where it runs, so.
And technically and legally, the operator has, has a right to access and maintain those lines?
Yes.
So, you don't want your house over it, or the street over it?
We've gotta get those out of the way.
Are there any other questions on oil and gas matters? No one here? Okay. With regard to our plat, as, as you all recall, this was a very contentious zoning application. We got it through the process. We took out the commercial, the multifamily, and so what you see in front of you is what was approved. There is a commercial application that's been filed, and that'll come up in the next 45 days for you all to hear. But at the present time, this is what has been approved, and, and so that's why we're here on the plat. With regard to any issues on the traffic, I have Todd Butler here. It's my understanding that the staff on item two has modified that. Those were conditions based on the previous zoning that had commercial. Okay. That being the case, the only, we agreed to all the technical evaluations except for number eight. And if you remember, Blackwelder, we, we decided to take the access off of and don't have any way to get to Blackwelder, so I'm not sure.
But, and within the common areas? That's, that's the last part of the T E's?
No, just Blackwelder, is what I was talking about. We'll, we'll have...
The developer will be responsible for construction of sidewalks within the common areas?
We will do that, absolutely.
Okay.
And we'll have sidewalks throughout the subdivision, just Blackwelder's all I was talking about.
You don't wanna add any T E's?
Pardon?
You don't wanna add any T E's?
No, sir.
Commissioners, discussion, comments, questions?
Can I have one?
Sure, Roland, go ahead.
Just to answer, answer Dennis' question. When, before this all happened, a study was initiated for use of that area. And the thought of moving somewhere else didn't come up until we met in the last month or two, I think? And, you know, the suggestion was, why don't you move it down here? Well, that required a new evaluation. It doesn't make any sense, moving at that distance wouldn't make that much difference, but apparently it does. And so, we, we're ready to go up here, we're ready to negotiate on that, on moving lines to accommodate that future development. But we were trying to move it here, because we thought that was what they wanted, and it does make some sense to us as well.
Explain to me why it matters to you, whether we approve this preliminary plat today or not?
Pardon?
Explain to me why it matters to you whether we approve this preliminary plat today? How, how will it really affect this ongoing negotiation process, or change your situation?
Well, we, we don't wanna have this plat cause us to somehow give up some rights, where they come along and say, move your, your wells, move your lines out of there, do this, do that. And we'd like it straightened out before we get to that point. It seems to me that that now is the time to do it, is when you're here, you know that certain things are going to be there, like that well. So, why wouldn't you draft your, your plat to accommodate at least that well, to accommodate a street, a road, an easement? I mean, it just seems that that's the way it should be done. And we're not trying to slow them down at all. In fact, we were talking in good faith before they ever bought the property, I believe, so.
Once the development's built out, they're not gonna be able to do any drilling, obviously, within the bounds of where that construction exists, because Board of Adjustment won't allow it. You can't drill a well in somebody's backyard, you've gotta be so many feet away from existing residential property and so forth.
Put them up.
Yep. The thing that would affect Roland's client potentially is if they were able to identify a drilling site or two now, in the next 45 days, that would fall within this area, then the final plat would obviously have to be designed to accommodate that. But once it's built, then, then the opportunities for the oil company change.
And we, we wanna state on the record again, we, we recognize the rights, and the fact that a preliminary plat's approved doesn't waive any of Mr. Teague's rights. I mean, this is a multi-year process, and obviously, we're not gonna go do something stupid in regard to development. If we have commercial opportunities here, and they don't wanna pay as much based on commercial land, and wanna move it here, then we'll work with them. And so, I think your question was a, a good one, Ms. Powers, and the answer is, we, we don't, we don't think the preliminary plat has any impact on them, because we're not asking them to waive their rights, and we're not gonna stand in front of you and say, but you approved the preliminary plat. We're still working with them. It allows us to come in with a small section for a final plat, and if they decide they wanna come over here, we'll work with them, find a pad side. If they wanna stay up in the commercial area, then they probably don't have any impact at all, so.
I, you know, I don't wanna be dense, but I also don't understand very much about this, the, the issues involved in the oil and gas development part. I mean, is it, is it applying pressure to the negotiation process for them to get a preliminary plat approved? I mean, is that what this is about? I don't, I don't get it.
No. The only thing a preliminary plat does is it allows us to go do a final plat, which final plats are always small sections of your preliminary plat. And I've stated on the record, we, we understand the rights are superior, and they're not waiving any of their rights. So, this doesn't put any pressure on, it allows us to proceed. If we wait another 45 days, then at 45 days, you know, depending on what that study says, we've been...
So, where would you anticipate your initial final plat would come in? Not, we're not, I'm not even thinking about final plats, but I mean, what, if, if you're thinking about doing just a, a small portion as preliminary, where would that be?
Yeah, Chris Anderson with the SMC Engineering.
The piece that they're looking at initially would be down in this area right here. Dennis, you got that other?
Avoiding the access road, of course.
Yes. We have an infinerous well site here. We were showing a possible pipeline over here, and if it's here, that would be fine. But what we're looking at, this area right here. But I can't, unless you're right here. I'm sorry. No oil lines in this area, away from the pipeline, away from the oil, pump lines in this area.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, much your pleasure. We've heard pro and con. No one signed up?
My comments haven't changed. I think that this is a preliminary, preliminary plat, and it's subject to so many contingencies and so much change, particularly what you just pointed to down at the, that southeast corner. There's some sort of road that goes in there that services that well. And if that is intact, well, then you change that corner, you change the other corner, you change the other corner, and by the time you come back here with a final plat, it may be, I mean, all mixed up. And, and what, you know, for the years I've been on this commission, here's the preliminary plat, and when we look at an application for a final plat, the staff says the final plat conforms with the preliminary plat. You know, so we say, okay, we've heard this. We will hear this anew. And I don't think that there's one iota of advantage to the applicant, to wait until this matter is over with in 45 days, and then they see, okay, this is my world. And so, my motion is, is to continue this application for 45 days, or until, Susan, October, whatever that day is.
Let me tell you, let me tell you one problem with that. Okay, in 45 days, we have one person, Roland represents a receiver, right? And they're doing a study, and that study's to deal with, you know, a future location of new wells, understand that. But as he indicated, they're up to Supreme Court. Are we gonna wait a year, two years, three years, until those interests are resolved?
My, my motion is only for 45 days. Well, but, I mean, that's, that's it, to give the receiver and his engineer time to analyze what it is that's, what it is that is gonna happen, or what could happen in the engineering aspect of it, to see what formations there are, what possible development there is, because the, the receiver, as you well know, Dennis, has a very real obligation to preserve the economic viability of this particular segment of property. And so, his engineer, this is what my assumption is, Roland, is that he's gonna analyze where the wells are, where the, you know, where the easements are, and what the prospect is for either development, or do the status quo, et cetera, because as Mr., as the chairman said, once you've plotted this, once you've done it, you know, and you have lots of, you know, it's like pulling hen's teeth to drill a well.
That's why you have buildings, it's not the lots.
Yeah. You know, you're...
Not to, not to be, I really try not to appear too stupid here, but isn't that really just a question of how much money they're gonna pay for the land, where they're gonna drill? They have wells, they know they can operate those. Isn't, isn't whether or not it's feasible to move them down there just a question of how much money they're gonna pay for the land that they need to drill from? I mean, isn't that, isn't that all that's really at stake here?
The real issue, I think, Dennis, is what the receiver receives from the person doing the analysis, and it is a matter of money. Because if there is, for example, another injection well, that the engineer says would prove up this water flood, as your, as your counsel said, and it would prove up that we have an injection well, and we'd move the, the oil down to whatever, either that tank battery up there or down here. You know, these injection wells move, move the product down so they can produce it, and it is a matter of money. So, this study has to do with what the receiver and his engineer's analysis says, we can do with this property to make it more viable, more economic, to pay the mortgagee, or the mortgageor... mortgageor off because of this foreclosure action. And the point is, is that this particular plat is a preliminary plat that likely, based upon everything I've heard, with what these wells are and what Mr. Tagg was talking about, has no relationship whatsoever to what's going to be the final plat, because there's all these other elements that have come up, you know. You can't make a decision, if you write, Dennis, until the Supreme Court rules.
We can make the decision in regard to our final plats. Don't assume you'll see a final plat that is as large as this preliminary plat.
That's my point.
Right. But we can't, unless the staff tells me they're going to allow us to go a different direction, we can't proceed with a final plat until you've approved a preliminary plat. We can't go with a little section of a final plat.
I always thought the preliminary plat, you come in here, this is what we're going to do, and then we come in and approve the final plat, and the final plat is not significantly different than the preliminary plat. That's, that's what I was told.
That's what typically occurs, but you have exigent circumstances here that would suggest that possibly that could change, could change.
Okay, but this, my motion, I made a motion.
The last point I'd make is, if, if your assumption is that you're going to see a final plat the same size as preliminary plat, look back through the last five years that you all have been dealing with plats, and what happens is, somebody comes in and they have a, a concept, and they do this preliminary plat, and then you'll see small sections of that develop for the final plat.
They're phased.
Right. And, and all I'm saying is, we recognize and don't want to impact in a negative way Mr. Tagg's client's rights. We admit they're superior, but we'd like to be able to push forward, because in forty-five days, if we're just looking at the preliminary, then we've got to take that, and then we've got to go do a final. So, we're probably, you know, sixty to a hundred and twenty days down the road, so.
Even if it's significant changes, we're still going to look at it.
Correct.
Sometimes, most of the time, we just say it's insignificant changes, so it matches, so we just go on with it. But if it has significant changes, then we take a whole fresh look at that preliminary plat, and they have to explain to us why the preliminary plat is not matching the final plat.
Which is really no different than we do anyway.
Right. But we go into more detail with it.
Well...
So, it don't make no difference.
We could also have another revised preliminary, but that's a... Commissioner Bright has made a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. We have a motion to continue item twenty-three for forty-five days to the second meeting in October. Ready to vote? Cast your votes. Four to two. Somebody want to make another motion? That motion failed.
So, the motion continues there, so we're going to go on the merits of the application here.
That would be... It would, it's before us now.
I'm going to move the application, uh, preliminary plat, understanding that if we see any final, final plat, it's only going to be a whole piece of this, and that the process of negotiation is going to continue, and, you know, I'm rather than saying these statements, and she understands that the mineral interests are very certain of resources and so on and so forth. With all of that, I don't have a problem approving the preliminary plat, so we're going to do that.
Leaving item number eight intact.
You have two TEs to consider, deleting two and eight.
Want number two, delete TE two, and then modify TE eight to take out the reference to Blackwelder.
Blackwelder. But we'll, we'll have sidewalks to the common areas in all thread.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item twenty-three as condition. Cast your votes. Same result.
See you in two weeks.
See you next time.
Item twenty-four, C sixty-four forty-three, preliminary plat of Crystal Hill Estates, Ward Three. Is there any oil in this one?
It's a pleasure to be here.
And, and you are who?
Dennis Box, five twenty-two, Colcord Drive. And, with regard to this, I believe that it's, um, it's hard to imagine, but we agreed to all the TEs, except for, it's my understanding that David Box has coordinated with the staff, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chambliss, but on item four, um, we have agreed to, uh, on the timing of construction, we'll begin for phase two. Other than that, we would agree with all the TEs. I know of no oil wells.
Does, does that mean you will indicate the amenities then, or they will be constructed with phase two?
Constructed.
Constructed?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll modify TE four to say that the developer will construct the amenities, the recreational amenities, with the approval of phase two?
Yes, sir.
Okay, no one has signed up, Commissioners?
I'm going to approve all of the amenities.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item twenty-four. Cast your votes. And, Mr. Ehlers was not there. Mr. Bright voted no. You, you should have been there. We need another motion. Todd wasn't here. He walked out. So, we need the motion. Amending TE four. Okay. Now, we have a motion and a second to approve item twenty-four as condition. Cast your votes. It's approved.
Item twenty-five is being continued. Item twenty-six, C sixty-four eighty-seven, final plat of Summer Hill Phase Three, in Ward One.
Jason Spencer with Craft and Toll, here to represent the applicant. What we've got, final plat here is for third phase of Summer Hill additions, thirty-five acre site located northeast of Britton Road and Mustang Road. Hundred and seven single-family lots in accordance with the R-1 zoning. We are requesting a variance, uh, which is TE number three, to allow more than thirty lots to be, uh, served by one access. We're proposing a temporary access. We've discussed this with Fire Marshal's Office, and they're in agreement.
Where, where would the temporary access be?
It would connect the, uh, if you can see the cul-de-sac on ninety-sixth Court.
Yes.
Connect that over to Ashville.
Oh, it's, it's, it's not shown, and what we have.
How temporary will it be?
We'll be able to remove the access upon completion of the future phase, which will provide a secondary access there to the north.
Would you point that out where that is? I have no, I have no access.
Well, we've got here from, uh, west of drive, I'm sorry, from ninety-sixth Court, connect over here to Ashville, three lots on the floor. Current location on the plat with an access easement, staff has recommended that that be removed, and we've been, uh, that lot until it's no longer needed.
Bob? Microphone? Coming off the cul-de-sac that is on the, that side, yeah, okay. Okay. Nobody signed up, Commissioners?
Remove approval of the variance.
We have a motion and a second to approve the variance, TE three. Cast your votes. That's approved. Move the application. A motion and a second to approve item twenty-six. Cast your votes. And that's approved.
Thank you.
Item twenty-seven is being continued. Item twenty-eight is C sixty-five hundred, preliminary plat of Chisholm Creek Farms in Ward Seven.
Good afternoon. Again, for the record, Kendall Dillon with Craft and Toll, representing the applicant. And, uh, this obviously is an application for a preliminary plat on a piece of property on the north side of one hundred and seventy-eighth Street, just to the west of Western. And the current zoning is R-1, single-family. We're not asking for any variances, and we are in agreement with all of the TEs. Um, there is, on TE number two, was, uh, regarding site distance, that has been checked, and the site distance works. Um, so, the rest of the TEs, we're all right with. A couple of things, we obviously had a few protest letters. Um, we have tried to make some contact, at least with some of the folks that we had numbers for. I was able to contact the president of the Homeowner Association of Palo Verde, who I think most of the letters generated from that subdivision. Um, spoke with him. Obviously, the concern in this area is in regards to drainage. So, what we have committed to them is that we will provide detention, even though that this is an area that staff's not requiring it. But we have committed, and I mentioned to them that I would present that in today's, you know, in our meeting today. So, we will be providing detention. We also are not doing any work, or we're not contemplating any work in the FEMA floodplain. So, and we've also agreed that with the final plat, when we actually do the design of the detention ponds, that we'd give them opportunity to review those documents as well. So, we've made those agreements to them. And then, one other thing that I will mention, if you'll notice on the west side of the plat toward the southern end, there are six lots there on the west. Um, there is a sanitary sewer easement in front of those lots, and there was a little bit of concern, I think, from the utilities department. So, I've worked with them, and what we will agree to, they're currently on the preliminary plat, is a thirty-foot front setback. We will make that a thirty-five foot, foot, front setback. And in addition to that, we'll agree that on those lots, that we'll do a period grade beam or a period footing. So, I think that was something that would make them happy, and we're agreement to go do it.
Where all the detention go?
The detention, I've got a map. If you can notice, obviously, north is up, but, so, north's up, but that is Chisholm Creek, the floodplain, but you can see that we've got numerous ponds. There is a small portion that drains back toward the Edmund side, but you can see that even in that basin, we're providing detention. So, we'll provide detention all the way around, and like I say, we'll release historic or less so that we're, won't have a negative impact on Chisholm Creek.
We do have someone signed up. Is Matt Mail here? Mr. Mail, if you'd give us your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. Uh, my name's Matt Mail. Uh, I'm the president of the Winding Creek Owners Association. I'm at two seventeen South Lexington Way in Edmund. Uh, we have concerns with this preliminary plat on three, uh, three issues. The biggest one being the drainage off of this property. Uh, this land sits on top of a hill, and drains basically in all directions, but, uh, the common area A, which appears on the eastern portion of this, uh, plat, near the, yeah, right there, uh, that is, is going to be a detention pond, uh, which drains into our detention pond. Uh, we're concerned because we're afraid that, as this drainage flows from their property to ours, that we'll have more problems, uh, in our area for the drainage that we have. If the, the pipe that leads between their property and ours, uh, is not able to handle the water flow from their detention pond, uh, it will overflow along a, a small culvert between two of our homes, uh, and go straight across the road that leads into our neighborhood. Um, and so, uh, our neighbors are concerned about this. And we want to know that, um, if this development goes forward, um, that this won't be an issue, this will be dealt with. Um, it's, you know, we're also concerned about the traffic. A lot of the people that, uh, well, anyone who's leaving our neighborhood knows, we only have one way in and out of this neighborhood, and that's onto one hundred and seventy-eighth Street. And, uh, this development, we're concerned, will create more traffic, uh, exiting and entering, uh, onto one hundred and seventy-eighth Street, and make it much more difficult for us to get out. We're already experiencing this problem, so we feel that just anything additional is going to make it worse. Uh, and the other issue, uh, is along the property line between, uh, Winding Creek and this development, there is already a, a significant tree line that, along the boundary, which is a fence line. Um, you know, I've spoken with, uh, Mr. Hagan, uh, by phone. He indicated that, uh, he could preserve this tree line to some extent if the, um, easements that were required for sewer were moved to the front of the lots along that property, uh, rather than along the back of the property lines. So, I'd like to make a request that if that's possible, to, to do that. He said, he told me that, um, it would actually increase the lot values if they were to able, able to leave the trees in place, and so, uh, but he said it would be up to me to make this request. So, I'm doing that, that if this does proceed, that the tree line, uh, that the easement be moved to the front of those property lines. Um, this, I mean, this is our, our major concerns with the property, um, and we'd like these addressed before this moves forward.
Kendall?
Sure, sure. Um, in regards, obviously, to the drainage, again, as per the map I showed you, we are providing detention there, so we'll release historic or less. Um, there's currently a flume, I think, about five lots in, and that will be our discharge point, which is where it currently goes today, so that there will not be an increase in rate runoff. And I'll be happy to, or we will, um, to provide you with those calculations with the final design and, and to give you an opportunity to review those. In regards to the traffic, obviously, we submitted a traffic impact analysis, shows everything is fine. I will say, in regards to that, while I'm thinking about it, there is one TE that staff, JJ and I were just visiting, that probably needs to be added. I think traffic management would like for us on the, um, westernmost drive-in to match the geometry of the existing drive to the south, and we're okay with that.
Yeah, Sunny Hollow, that'll be another TE. We'll add that.
Right. So, we can add that TE, we're okay with that. But in regards to traffic, like I say, everything functions at acceptable level of service. In regards to the trees, there are trees along that property line. We like trees, so, but that being said, I mean, we can't make any guarantees as to which trees will stay, if any. Um, what has been discussed, typically, we do put the sewer in the backyards, and by trenching and everything else, obviously, it takes out some of those trees. So, we would be willing, if the utilities department, I don't know that they would want it, but we would be willing to consider putting the sewer in the front and trying to save some of the trees. I don't think it's going to be possible to save all the trees, but we'll do what we can do. But by no means is that a commitment to save all the trees.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming. Commissioners, any questions? Discussion?
I move, uh, the application with the addition of TE seven, that detention will be provided, bear with me, uh, that detention will be provided. Uh, number eight, you'll use your best efforts with Public Works or whomever to move the sewer lines to the front of the property line in order to preserve whatever trees there are in the back of the property along the creek. I mean, it's a best efforts.
A, a, but, we'll, we'll try.
Is that okay?
I just don't want to...
I understand what you're...
Sure.
But, and then the, the TE nine, uh, what was the traffic issue?
Will match the geometry of the entrance to the south.
Yeah.
On our westernmost drive.
On Sunny Hollow Road to the south.
Yeah. So, with those addition of TEs, I move approval of the application.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second with three additional TEs. Pro, item twenty-eight, cast your votes, and you're approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item twenty-nine is PD zero eighty-eight, application by TD Investments and Four Corners Construction to vacate a note on, at, on the plat of Asheville Phase Two regarding residential sprinklers.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Dusty Born, six one eight zero, Voucher Drive in Edmund, Oklahoma. Here on behalf of TD Investments and Four Corners Construction LLC, um, asking to have this note vacated to allow the customers that build these homes to have the choice of having the fire suppression installed in their homes if they choose that, versus it being installed for them.
What's the alternative to sprinklers?
The al...
No, I have a question.
Okay, the alternative would be to have no fire suppression installed in the homes.
And we fight the fires how?
With the Oklahoma City Fire Department. With the Oklahoma City Fire Department.
Is there water there?
I think you've agreed to put in a tank, right?
Correct, yes. We would, if this would go through, then we would do what has been done in the past, which is install a storage tank onsite that would allow the fire department to access that water, versus just having a fire suppression system in every home, so they'd be able to access that water for not only the homes within this neighborhood, but for any other homes or any other grass fires that were in that area as well.
Okay, I wasn't here for the last meeting, so explain to me why you were concerned about sprinklers.
Well, this has been ongoing conversation between Councilman Pete White and Commissioner Jim Allen that we've been having. Our customers have requested them not be installed.
The customers are home builders?
Are homeowners. So we are building the homes within Asheville, and they have multiple times requested them to not be installed because of, one, the expense, and then, two, the fear of having water lines running in their attic that they have no control over.
Don't they have indoor plumbing?
They do, and that runs in the slab underneath the ground.
Okay.
One, one thing I'd like to ask JJ, on, on a, a tank for that subdivision, what size tank would that have to be? And would that tank have a separate well to provide water for that tank?
The storage, it would have to store 15,000 gallons?
And it would have to have its own well?
I don't believe it'd have to have its own well, no.
A what?
I don't believe it'd have to have its own well.
Why we have?
It'd have to have a supply.
A supply from somewhere.
Okay.
Mike Wilson with Fire Marshal's Office. The requirement for a water supply tank is that it have a capability of replenishing itself, typically with a well. That well can be used for other purposes also, but if they need a tank that would be connected to a well. We haven't been able to talk to the applicant about specifics, if they want to propose a well, where they're going to be provided, where the connections are going to be, access to them, all of those things that we would feel need to be addressed. We do want to, in rate, the, the other sections of Asheville are sprinkled, and we would prefer that we stay continuous, and all these are, all these residences are sprinkled, so we don't have a question of whether or not this house is sprinkled or not sprinkled, or if we need to use the water tank method. So our suggestion would be that, that the comments stay on the plat. We have had a lot of discussion, and, and the industry has had a lot of discussion about the misconceptions there are with fire sprinkler systems, about the leaks, the insurance rate increases, the different things that they, that are said about fire suppression systems. And there are a lot of misconceptions out there in the public, and, and we all, the fire department included, would need to work on the, what would be the home buyers, to let them know that it isn't something they should necessarily be afraid of.
Well, we spent a lot of time, this commission, a couple of years ago, looking at the issue of sprinklers. And I, I came away with the, the feeling that if I was going to build a house, I would sprinkle it. Somebody walks in, the fire department walks in with one of those high-pressure hoses to put a fire out, and they've basically destroyed the house. A fire alarm or a fire suppression system goes off where the fire or heat source is only, so if it's in your kitchen, that's the only place you're going to have water. It's not going to soak the rest of your house. I think it's a selling point, and I don't see why it's not used as a selling point. The cost is relatively minimal per square foot when you're building a house. In four or five years of insurance credits, it's paid for, and you've got a much more practical, safer method of fire suppression. The other discussion I hear is, well, fires only happen in old houses. Well, these are new now, but they won't always be. And I think it's a selling point. I mean, you're selling a safer house where fire issues are concerned, and seems to me an extremely desirable feature to have in a house, and not a burden.
Right, and I can speak to that because of the home sales that we have, have in Asheville. That is the only neighborhood where we install, because it's mandatory that we do that, fire suppression systems. Of the 200 homes we've sold this year, that's the only neighborhood where they've chosen to have that done, or they didn't choose, it was chosen for them. We offer that same feature in all of our homes for all of our other home buyers, and they choose not to spend anywhere from $3,000 to $4,000 extra for that benefit. There's different arguments on whether insurance agents do give a discount or not. I contacted my personal homeowner's insurance and asked them for a $250,000 home, what would be the discount, if any, with a fire suppression system, and it averaged out to be about $23 per month. So the return on investment is not four or five years, it's more into the 10- to 12-year range. And that's, again, if the customer chooses to have that. Most of the customers do not see that as a selling feature. They'd much rather have a tornado shelter in their garage, or a safe room in their closet for 2,500, or $4,000, the same amount of money. They would much rather have that. And, and from a life-saving standpoint, I think that's much more advantageous to Oklahomans here.
If you remember, Mr. Chairman, I was, was a big advocate of, and kind of pushed the fire suppression. And I think the fire department gave us some information that wasn't actually factual, in the fact that, number one, that those suppression systems could be put in for somewhere around a dollar a foot. That's not the case. It's more like a two, two and a quarter a foot.
It's not quite two and a quarter, but a little bit less than that, but definitely more than a dollar per square foot.
And it's not just Asheville. It's the, we did another subdivision on southeast 29th Street that does not have a house built in it yet. It's, it's a very small subdivision, and she's tried to sell houses in that subdivision before, and it's been sitting there for about four years. And everybody that she's tried to sell houses to don't want the, the fire suppression. They're afraid of it. And I don't know, you know, to me, it's a, it, you know, it's an asset, and it's something that you could, you know, you could sell. But apparently, the public is not, you know, that aware of what the fire suppression can do, and they're afraid of it. It's not just Asheville and this other lady, there's been some other people have problems with the, you know, with the fire suppression as well. You know, and that's one of the reasons why, when Dusty asked me about it, I said, well, you know, hey, you know, I've heard that from other people, and so Councilman White as well. So, and I think Asheville and the one on 29th Street, well, they volunteered to, I mean, that was one of their items when they did that development, is to put fire suppression in. And that's what they've done on, you know, the, the phases that they've completed. How many houses have you sold out there, Dusty?
I apologize, I don't know that stat, but it's probably in the neighborhood of around 30 to 35 in Phase One and Two together.
Have you actually had a problem with, with any of the, the fire suppression systems?
Not, had just a couple of heads that leaked that we had to have the, the representative of company come back out and fix that. Not a major leak, just a small, you know, drip, but other than that, we've had no, no problems with them. But we've only, probably the oldest system out there is maybe a year and a half, two years, and that'd be in the model home. It's interesting, one of the stats from the National Fire Protection Agency is that when the fire sprinklers don't work, 64% of the time is because someone has shut them off. And I think that's what you're going to start to see a lot of the homeowners doing, because they do fear it, so they don't want to have that freezing in the winter time, or any of those types of things. And, and I'm afraid we'll see them turn them off, and they're going to go inactive anyway. So there's, for, for that choice to be taken away, and just to put a $3,000 to $4,000 extra expense on the homeowner, I'd rather allow them to have that choice of what they would like to put in the home.
Well, and one other aspect is, you know, if you do have a fire, let's say a grass fire or something, you lose electricity, you've lost your fire suppression anyway. So it's gone.
But there, there's a contrary issue about what the homeowner's knowledge is of the fire suppression system sprinklers. And that is, what's the alternative? And I think that you were describing, I don't know what kind of capacity tank there would be. I mean, when the fire goes on, and they've got to hook the hose up to the tank, is it a 50,000, 100,000 gallon tank, whatever it is? And if the fire starts, I would think it's just a matter of education of the homeowner, is that if you have a fire in the kitchen, and then you dial for the fire department, and I don't know how far away you are from this subdivision, but you're, you're not next door.
It's quite a ways, yeah.
You know, I mean, this is the whole point, is educating the homeowner that the fire department is 10 minutes away, or whatever. In that 10 minutes, here's the fire going on, and it burns the kitchen, and the living room, and the dining room, et cetera, and by the time you get here to hook up your hoses to the tank, and do whatever pumper you have to do, all of a sudden, you've got a fully engaged fire. And I think it's a matter of just, I wouldn't go into an office building unless I saw those sprinklers up there. You know, I mean, that is, just because, you know, I want it to be put out. And I know that the sprinklers, when a fire starts, it sprinkles the area, doesn't sprinkle the whole house, you know? Also, the issue of freezing, you know, we went through this with that, what, that study that we did for a long time. You know, you have water pipes in your house. They sometimes freeze if you don't have them insulated, et cetera. You know, the, the pipes you put up, as I understand it, are not 100% freeze resistant, but they're in the same category as the water pipes in your house. So I think it's a matter of educating, and I think that based upon everything that I've heard from the fire department particularly, is that, you know, you, you would like these fire sprinklers more than your next breath in every house that's ever built. It would, it saves lives, it saves property, et cetera. And that's what I learned, I'm not making anything up, I just learned it from those.
It, it helps, I mean, it reduces the water usage considerably. When we don't come in with a 250 gallon a minute hose, instead, we're using a 25 gallon a minute head instead of the hose. It, it just, it creates a lot of good things in that instance. One of the things that I've learned since being with the fire department, the more and more homes are being insulated by spraying, and when they spray the attic, you don't even have the problem of having to cover the pipe and keep it from freezing.
Right.
Because the attic stays pretty much almost the same temperature as the house below. So you don't have the problem that we've had in the past with people peeling insulation off of a pipe and not putting it back, and, and then it freezes. So.
But that construction science of actually using spray foam in an attic is not utilized hardly at all within Oklahoma, especially in larger homes. So that doesn't necessarily transpire across all homes, there's different methods for insulating an attic.
Chief Thompson with Fire Marshal's Office. I agree with your numbers on the NFPA. I just built a home roughly, just shy of 3,100 square feet. I sprayed my attic, I sprinkled my home. And there are homes in Rosewood Edition, I think is the correct name of it, that have spray foam installation in it. Some may or may not have the sprinkler system. When I go in my attic on a day like today, it's probably five degrees difference from interior. It works. When you talk about $3,000, $4,000 for a sprinkler, and 10 years to get your return, I look at it from the standpoint of, that's about what it takes for your carpet to wear out, and you're replacing it anyway. And you want to spend your money on upgrade on carpet? The sprinkler system, and the way we view it in the fire service, it's a firefighter in your house 24 hours a day, just in case something happens. Hopefully, you never need them, but when you do, he's right there. So when you think in terms of the 250 gallons a minute to a 25 gallon head, you've got probably five minutes of that head just flowing, long before we ever get there. So you're not looking at the same amount of water, and the damage that, and the conversion that the sprinkler system has over a fire, in that situation, in most cases, in apartment fires that we've had where they're sprinkled, a single head put the fire out. So it's kind of putting us out of the business of spraying water, which I enjoy. So those are the things that we try to stress in residential homes, because all multifamily have to be sprinkled. So, again, I, I concur with you that, yes, they do need to be educated. We have a sprinkler trailer that we can bring out to the homeowners, and we've offered to do that, and help educate the public on just how those things work. It's a tool that's provided for us by OSU and the fire service, and it's there for us to use, and I'm just looking forward to get it out in the community and show folks.
Chief, let me ask you a question.
Yes.
In a rural area, where, where each house has its own individual well.
Yes.
In that fire suppression, you got a, you get a, a wildfire.
Mm-hmm.
Which is on the outside of the house, and most generally, you're going to lose electricity with that wildfire.
Okay.
Your, your suppression system is null and void. Whereas, are you in a rural area?
No, sir.
Do you have a well and septic tank?
No, sir, but.
Or well? And see, that, that's one of the, one of the things that is, you know, a downfall with a suppression system on a well, is because most of the fires that, that you see in a rural area, it are wildfires. And, you know, it, it's no good.
Well, I, I would agree with you, but the suppression system in a wildfire is not designed to protect the home. Mm-hmm. It's designed to let the people get out.
Right.
So if you do lose power, the water that's in the line, nine times, I don't want to put a number on it, but that water will suppress the fire.
Very little, very little.
And like in all other occasions, whether it be floods, or whether it be ice storms, if you're living in a rural, you're also taking on those added things of not having power. So, yes, you might take a few extra steps, because the choices you make to live out in a rural area, you might need a backup generator, gas power generator, which I live in the city, and that's what I have, because I just don't want to be without power.
On a, on a wildfire in a, in a rural area, would you rather have a tank that's got 15,000 gallons to spray on that, rather than a, than a suppression system inside a house?
I would answer that by saying I'd rather have a water supply being that of a hydrant, where I know it's constant, and it would be there, because the only issue with water tanks, when the developer leaves, who maintains that? Who do we, that's the problem we have. We'd have nobody to enforce it upon, because they're a single-family dwelling. We have to then possibly go out to the homeowners association, all just to protect them from themselves.
Well, it's, it's your responsibility to make sure those fire hydrants work in, in the city as well. Is that not correct?
It's the conjunction with other city departments to assure that those hydrants work.
Right.
Yes.
So it would be your responsibility to make sure that that well, or that tank, had water in it, and the well was supplying it?
We can go assure, but it's not our responsibility to maintain it, and that's the issue we come up with. Because if the hydrant is broke.
So that's not a dedicated thing, so, I mean, it's not dedicated, just like a road would be dedicated, dedicated to the city?
We're not going to accept that.
Okay.
That's not acceptable water source.
Okay.
Can I? You're going to fight a wildfire the same way regardless of whether a sprinkled house is on the street or not?
That's correct.
You're going to have to.
Yes. And again, the sprink, you don't sprinkle outside of your home.
Right.
And even, even a lawn sprinkler, you see folks wetting the, the yard and things in it, wildfire. It's really, when it gets going, as you saw years ago, it, it's not, it helps, but not near as much as the quantity of water it would take to put out a wildfire.
You, you know the drive-in, the Sonic Drive-In on Choctaw Road up on the, on the hill?
Yes, sir.
It's got a tank.
Yes, sir.
And I guess the re, well, that's got a sit-down restaurant in it. Why, why was that not sprinkled? It's a commercial building, got a sit-down restaurant, but it's got a tank, rather than a suppression system.
Through time and education, at that time, the Sonic, is that what you're talking about? Because of the square footage, it wouldn't be required to be sprinkled, but it's required to have a water source to protect the structure. So if you go right across the street, that truck drive-in, they have two tanks.
Right.
If I'm not mistaken, they're sprinkled.
Yeah, they, they have tanks as well, yeah.
So, because. So because, now, you've got to go back to when it was built. I can't go back and retrofit that, or make them do anything until they pull a permit and they meet the requirements to be sprinkled. And then if you go in that same area, go just to the north, to the KOA Park, they have a water tank there. Obviously, they're moving mobile homes in and out, in RV park, but, you know, we still have to protect.
Is Love's going to have to have a tank?
Possibly. If they rebuild, yes, they will. Or they have it on their plan?
Well, and Chief Johnson, at least when we last looked at this, the national data reported that there'd never been a fire death in a sprinklered home, anywhere in the nation. That was the data that we had a couple of years ago. I don't know if that's changed, but...
That's still true today.
That's a pretty remarkable statement.
May I ask, these tanks are 15,000 gallon tanks?
Mm-hmm.
Is that right? Can you put out a house fire with 15,000 gallons?
If we were there when it started.
You could?
If we were there when it started, and already hooked up, meaning, it's highly unlikely that it would, it would put out a fire, it would just depend on what type of fire.
I'll be...
But then, we use 15,000 gallons, but we have studies and have information to give you that that may not be enough, and then based off this plot and how it is, where would you have these tanks?
Well, and that's, I had that question as well.
You might have multiple tanks, because of the distance, you need to be within the connection, based off the water rigs that we currently have.
Well, actually, I cannot support this application. I mean, you know, I think that most of what we're hearing here is simply a lag between, you know, innovation and demand in the marketplace. And, you know, I think we anticipated that there might be some of that, and that it might take a while before people came around to see this as just something that would be a standard requirement. But, you know, everything that we've been told, and taught, and learned, I just don't see any reason to revisit this every time somebody decides they don't want to spend that extra money. I think, I think the demand will build itself into the marketplace eventually, and until then, I think we have some obligation to public safety to foster this along. And I cannot support this application, and unless anybody else has something to say, I'm going to move to deny it.
So what we, what we need to do then, we need to make sure that every subdivision in rural areas are fire suppressed, not just one, or two, or three. And then we need some kind of publicity to, from the city to help promote that, and help people to be more acceptable to that system, and not be afraid of it.
One last thing, if I may, if we're talking about saving lives, the smoke detectors, and them being battery operated as well as hardwired backed up, that statistically is the best lifesaver. I've never heard the stat that there hasn't been one single death in a home, in a residential dwelling, versus, a lot of the statistics I was able to find, all had multifamily and apartments added in there. So I don't know about the statistic of a standalone home, but that's 99.45% chance of surviving a fire with a operating smoke detector. So if we're talking about saving lives versus property damage, then again, I think it should go back to the homeowner, it's great that you chose to do that, but I think it goes back to the homeowner to make that decision on whether they want to invest in possibly saving some of their personal property in the event of a home fire, or if they would rather have a storm shelter for the same investment, and put that in versus the other, with a survival rate of 99.45% with the fire smoke detectors that we already have. So with that being such low odds, I think the survivability rate of having a storm shelter that you can walk in with your family is a much better, greater investment. But again, I think it's up to the homeowners to make that choice in this scenario.
I don't accept that as an either or choice, or I think, I just think that's a false dichotomy. What we're here to talk about today is fire suppression and sprinklers. I'm going to move to deny this application.
And I second the motion, and as far as publicity, perhaps a recording of what your statements have been at this meeting, and Jim's questions back and forth, that kind of identifies where the issues are, where the issues aren't, and what your opinion is, and so, you know, condense what we've been saying here, and hand it out. I mean, it's really, so I second the motion.
Well, I get, I get... I think we need publicity from the fire department to promote those things, and, you know, I'm still, if I built a brand-new house today in, on a five-acre track, or a one-acre track on a well, my house would have fire suppression. But, you know, and I'm going to vote for the motion, but I think it's our responsibility to make sure that we have these things in all houses that are, you know, in remote, remote.
That would be the fire department's goal. Now, that's the fire department's goal.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor, cast your votes. And sprinklers remain.
Thank you.
Maybe the Home Builders Association would like to do something in concert with the Oklahoma City Fire Department. They have this educational equipment available, and maybe do a, you know, a DVD or something that can be provided to potential homeowners. I mean, I think the more people know about it, the more people are going to want it.
Do you have brochures and stuff along, or can you produce them?
Yes, the Fire Sprinkler Association across the nation has videos and things that we can provide, that we just never had a chance to see.
Will you help him sell those?
Huh?
Will you help him sell?
Personally, no, but, but yes, I will. I would do my best to do my part.
We'd love to get that information.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, item 30 has been continued. Item 31 is C 6509, preliminary plat of Austin Quail Springs Office Park, in Ward 8.
For the record, Brian Coon, representing applicant, there are five TEs, we agree with them all.
Can you say that faster?
Well, if you want me to. We agree with all TEs. You know who I am.
No one signed up, commissioners?
If there's no protests, as I move to approve the application.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 31, cast your votes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bright did not vote, so make sure that record shows.
Item 32 is C 6510, a preliminary plat of Crestone Ridge, in Ward 1.
Keith Beatty with the Asian Associates. We agreed to meet the technical evaluations, 1, and then 3 through 12, and are requesting a variance on number 2. We have shown interconnection to the west, but we are not wanting to do it to the north, and part of the reason for that is the potential of traffic through the subdivision with the turnpike to the west, Redden Road not having access to the turnpike, there is the potential for a lot of traffic through the subdivision going south to get to Wilshire and to the turnpike. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any more questions.
Boy, looking at your street layout in there, I don't see that that invites a lot of north-south traffic.
Well, we've tried to do it just in...
That was a goal of the street layout, I bet.
Yes, sir.
I think I'm inclined to want that north connection. No one has signed up, commissioners? Oh, wait a minute, excuse me, somebody is. I beg your pardon. Mr. Fetzer?
Yes, thank you. My name's Dean Fetzer. We live at 9120 Northwest 83rd Street, which is just adjacent to the proposed Crestone Ridge.
Mm-hmm.
We, my wife and I have a specific complaint, or not complaint, but concern about the street and lot configuration on the northeast side of the preliminary proposed plat. We purchased our home about 18 months ago, at the end of 83rd Street, it's on the cul-de-sac, and our front, front yard property line extends to the middle of the cul-de-sac, and then westward about 15 feet or so. We are concerned about the arrangement of the street and the lots along that northeast side, because the back of those lots will butt up against 10 properties along the west side of Cottonwood Farm 2 and Cottonwood Farm 3. They'll butt up against the front yards of those properties. 10 properties, only three of those properties are, have occupied homes on them now, ours being one of them. We feel that it is not right and good for backyards to be abutted directly adjacent to front yards of other properties.
So your front yard faces either about...
Faces north.
South or north?
It faces north.
Okay, so your, your house is aligned...
If you, there's a number 7.
Yeah, I see, that's your lot.
That's our lot.
And then Lot 11 and the next subdivision, that house would logically, anyway, face east-west.
Yes, yes, they do.
And you're north-south.
We purchased our home as a retirement home, and felt that we would be there, you know, until we are gone. We feel that when our children try to dispose of our property, with a backyard fence going along just 10 feet away from my driveway, it's going to decrease the value of our homes, all 10 of those homes along in that area, and some of the adjacent homes too. So that, that is our main concern. We are concerned with the traffic too, with 84th Terrace being the only exit to the east from Crestone Ridge. We feel that there'd be lots of traffic going through northwest 84th Terrace up to get out of Cottonwood 3, addition to County Line Road. I understand that Crestone Ridge is going to be a gated property, I assume at Wilshire, so I think a lot of people will be wanting to avoid those gates by going out 84th. So I'll bring my comments to a close. I just wanted you to know our concern, we've stayed here all afternoon, and we just ask that you...
Your seats are harder than ours, too. I sympathize.
If you just might ask the developer to at least consider a reconfiguration of that area when they prepare their final plats. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, thank you for your patience. You get a lot more traffic if 82nd Street was connected through from the west instead of 84th Terrace, that's for sure.
Yeah.
That straight shot would really draw traffic. I don't know what they do about the design of their plat versus the design of yours, I mean, that's, they don't have to do anything, and we can't compel them to.
Well, I...
I understand your problem, and I don't have a fix.
Okay, well, we understand that. I visited with Joe Roberts, who's one of the developers of Crestone, and just wanted you to know our position, and we just felt that it was not quite right, that backyards would back up against someone else's front yard, so, and I thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for your patience in being here.
There's one thing I'd like to clarify, these are not going to be gated streets. There's an area down in the southeast corner that's going to be kind of a garden-type home that will be gated, but the majority of the preliminary plat before you is going to be public streets.
Okay. Commissioners, no one else has signed up? Any questions, comments? There's a variance to TE 2.
I do think that there needs to be access to the north. I don't think that the connectivity is sufficiently addressed by this plat.
We will agree to meet all technical evaluations.
Good.
Well, we need to vote, we need action on the variance in any case.
So we're not, we're not getting rid of the north connectivity?
I won't vote for it.
I won't either. Okay.
Well, the question is, we need a motion, though, to deny the variance.
Or if we could just eliminate TE...
I make a notion to approve the application, denying the variance. Can you do that?
Susan, do we need the variance voted?
I'll vote on the variance.
Yeah, that's what I think, the variance has to be voted on separately.
Well, I'll vote to deny the variance.
Second.
On TE number 2.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny the variance to TE 2, cast your votes. That's approved.
Make a motion to approve the application without TE number 2.
Second, somewhere?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 32 without TE 2, cast your votes, and that's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 33 is C 6507, a final plat of North Lincoln Industrial Park, Section 2, in Ward 7.
Hello, I'm Chuck Twiwa with SRV Engineering, 100 Northeast 5th Street, Oklahoma City, representing the applicant. This final plat has a couple of variances, one being the length of the cul-de-sac is longer than what the regulation allows, and that's just, you know, based upon, you know, the lot layout that we have, and how far back we go, and our property's not deep enough for a second street to loop back around or anything. And then the other variance is the public versus private sanitary sewer. We worked long and hard trying to find a way to get access to public sewer, but we couldn't, so we had to put in a lift station, and because of that fact, we need private sanitary sewer.
Okay, staff is also asking on TE 6, to add to the end of TE 6, unless temporary turn, unless a temporary turnaround is provided at the end of 145th Place.
Yes, on the Phase 1 plans, we had a temporary cul-de-sac there, and, you know, we want to keep that temporary cul-de-sac in place, you know, until the street's extended and built all the way down, so...
And that's what they're asking for by the additional language in TE 6?
Uh-huh, yeah, we agree to that.
All right, no one's signed up, commissioners?
I move approval of the variance on TE number 3.
We have a motion and a second to approve the variance, TE 3, cast your votes. It's approved.
And I move the approval of variance on TE number 4.
A motion and a second to approve the variance on TE number 4, cast your votes.
I move the application.
And a motion to approve item 33, cast your votes.
It's already in there.
Thank you.
Okay, item 34 is C 6508, this is a final plat of Woodvine Commercial 5, in Ward 8.
My name is Terry Pollock, I represent JGVE Engineering, and of course, the client, Mr. Gary Quick, who is sitting here with us today. We are requesting a plat approval, but also a TE, a variance, a TE number 3, in this information deals with the need to provide, requesting to provide utilities, not a private utilities. The way that we can, I can best describe this is that, if you notice on your map there that you have, all of this Woodvine information, it starts at the south, Woodvine Commercial 1, that entire strip from 1 all the way through past, or to the north at 173rd, is all part of the PUD, it's all part of the PUD, provided in 2005. And what makes this, this PUD a little different than a regular plat is that the PUD allowed for there to be common area around all the platted lots. So the lots kind of sit out in space, where there's a common area, either behind or in front, so there's common ability to maneuver in that area. So there's no standard roadway, for instance, in front of a platted lot, because it's all a common area. And there has already been in this PUD, Woodvine 1's finished, this one... And there has already been in this PUD, Woodvine One's finished, this one right beside it, Woodvine Two to the north is finished, we're right there at the end, we just are working on the one, just, uh, Woodvine Four. So the only piece left in this whole PUD is the one that we're on right now. And all these others, they've all been approved so far and to the point with having private water provided and private sanitary sewer provided for them. So what we're recommending is that, that we continue to do that, and if you'll notice on your map, here's the other thing interesting about, let's start with just a sewer first, 'cause that's the big issue maybe, but in the, in the one that we're working on now, the lots that are the northern lots, which would be Lots One, Two, and Three on this particular request, well, there's a sewer line already on the east side, running a ten, a twelve-inch sewer line that parallels the whole side on the east. So Lots Three, Four, and Five, and Six are already in, in, in compliance with just going into a main sewer line. What happens is Lot One and Two on this are not. And One and Two, what we, what our problem with getting those, a public line there is there's not enough dirt, not enough depth of cover, the six-foot minimum depth, we cannot get the flow to get back into the line. So just to the north of this addition, we had to do the same thing with that other Woodvine Four and provide two private, maintained by the homeowner or the, the Property Owners Association to provide for them. So then, in reality, the variance is only for those two right there, and the other ones that give us grief that have to have this variance is on the south side, Lots Seven, Eight, and Nine. Now Lot Nine can run a regular service line over to the main on the east, so what is hanging out there is Lots Seven and Eight. And those are the only other two that, now we could run a public sewer line up through there, but, and we can run an eight-inch, we have enough depth of cover 'cause we come up the hill and all that, but there's really no great value in doing that, an eight-inch sewer line just for these two units. These units are commercial units, they're twenty-five hundred square feet apiece, they're a typical eight-to-five, kind of a business-type arrangement. And the way you might consider that is they're almost like houses in reality that has a, a service line going out to a main. So our request on the sanitary sewer is for us to continue as we have in the past and provide service lines that the city hasn't, it's none of their, it won't be under their control, then it's under the homeowners association, that if there's any problems, they maintain it. That's the sewer. Now, on the, on the water line, um, I don't have it drawn, I've got it right here, and I've got you a bunch of copies, but if you'll notice, if you can see this blue line, can you see the blue line on the water line here?
Yep.
In order to get coverage for just fire protection, we had to run a sewer, a water line in there anyway. So we've run a water line right down the middle of the, of the, of the subdivision, all right, with a fifteen-foot easement, of course. And what we would propose to do, that's a public line. Now, it doesn't hit on every single lot like a normal subdivision would require, but at the end of the, of this water line, we'll, we'll put all the water meters within the regular distance, a short service connection it's called, and then from there, after that short service connection or the water meters, every one of these lots will have its own water line, just like, just like you would. And here's another way to look at this. If you were to buy a lot, a residential lot, on a street, but the lot was three hundred foot deep, hundred foot wide, three hundred foot deep, well, the city would, you've got a water line in the front, sewer line in the back. Well, if you put the house in the front, you've gotta run three hundred foot of sewer line to get to the back. If you put the house in the back, you've gotta run three hundred foot of water line to get to the front. That's all we're requesting here. There's really no difference in it, in that, in that perspective. So that's our request. Our request is to allow Mr. Quick to develop these lots, which are for sale, with this common area for maneuverability, with these, in reality, only four units that have to have private sewer lines that don't fit, and a water line that doesn't hit every single lot line. Well, the lot lines aren't even up against anything, they're up against a privately-owned piece of property. And that is our request.
So variance to TE Three takes care of all that?
That's correct.
Any protests?
No.
I move approval of the variance on TE Three.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the variance on TE Three. Cast your votes. It's approved.
Thank you.
Approval of the application.
Second. A motion and a second to approve Item Thirty-Four. Cast your votes. You're approved.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Gary.
Item Thirty-Five is SP four-sixty-two. This is an application by Express Properties for a special permit to operate auto sales dealership in the C-three Community Commercial District, Seventy-two Twenty Southwestern Avenue and Ward Five.
Rich Bernard, representing Express Properties, we have some items for the committee. Can we pass them up? We'd like to specifically address, first of all, we're lifelong residents of South Oklahoma City and more, and own and operate various businesses within that vicinity and across the state, and have various projects currently going on, both in real property and auto dealerships. In the staff analysis, toward the end, it states the zoning along this segment of Western is C-three, which does not permit outdoor display. In the materials we provided you, on the last page, it shows a photo of the business immediately to the north of the subject property that uses outdoor display to sell headstones, both on the north and south side of its, uh, of that building. Also, we'd like to point out that zero-point-eight miles north of I-two-forty from this subject property, there is another auto dealership that has Western frontage, as well as three dealerships within one thousand feet, as a proverbial crow's, crow flies along two-forty, and Eleven within two miles. Some of these other photos in the material that you've get, we've given you, shows some of our other dealerships in a self-imposed standard, which we like to uphold, concerning landscaping, aesthetic property standards that we have, and want to assure the committee that this is something that we believe the community will be proud of. Recently, in another subject property about a mile north of here, we had a event to give schoolkids backpacks and school supplies, and, uh, all of our businesses are very community-oriented, and we believe that it'll be something that this part of town will be proud of.
I would just like to follow up with, uh, my name, by the way, is Sean Richardson. I'm at a thirteen-thousand-sixteen Rohan Court, and, um, the staff has recommended that there's numerous other auto dealerships around, and kinda the point is, why don't you just find another location that's already an automotive dealership? Well, it's because none of those locations are in the right location, and there's really not any good alternatives, there's really not any vacancies. We already operate a dealership on I-two-forty in Santa Fe, known as Express Credit Auto, so we want to distance ourselves a little bit from that. This dealership would be named something else, and it would be after a slightly different demo. That demo that we're after is primarily concentrated on Western Avenue. In addition to that, our, our customers shop and take care of their business immediately in that area, and also, there's a big need for economic development in that area, there is a lot of vacancies. And the bank, this is a foreclosed property that has been vacant for quite some time.
Approximately eighteen months?
Yeah, approximately eighteen months. It's currently in bank ownership. The air conditioning units have already been stolen, that's forty thousand dollars. The bank is not reasonable on their price, we're not buying this as a investment. This is being purchased for business use, for business profit. The price that we're paying for the real estate, which is the bank's bottom dollar, no investor's gonna come in there and pay it, and, um, no restaurant will be able to afford to make the mortgage payments, which would be seven and eight thousand dollars a month for a Mexican restaurant. That would require a lot of tacos. Also, there is a cross street directly north of the property, right across from that cross street is a daycare. Nino's was, I'm sorry, south of the property, not north, south of the property, there is a residential street or a side street, and, um, there is a daycare there. The, Nino's was selling alcohol there. We will not be selling any alcohol. We believe that that would be safer for the daycare, safer for the immediate residents, and also, we don't think that the building, the building's already been vandalized once, it's already been broken into once. So we, we just think that if, if, if this is, variance is denied, the building most likely will sit vacant for a very long time and be a potential problem for crime, fire, and other community hazards.
Commissioners, questions, discussion? No one has signed up?
Well, I went here, visited this property yesterday, it was around four o'clock, and I absolutely just gave up after not being able to turn off of, out of this property to turn south because of the traffic. And that troubled me greatly. I'm not crazy about where this, um, about having car sales here, it really has nothing to do with the applicant, you guys at all. I just am not, it just doesn't seem to fit. The one that is north of here at Fifty-Ninth, um, you know, I don't know, I'm not, I know that's not a part of this application, it just, it didn't seem to fit there either. I prefer to have this type of, uh, entity on two-forty, on the north or south side of two-forty, like most of them are. I just, it just really troubled me yesterday, knowing that I couldn't get out of there, you know, even trying to. Took me well over five minutes just to gain the courage to do that, still had to pull out in front of somebody, and so I, I just don't see any way that I could support this regardless of their business model, which I think is, uh, is very successful.
If I may, Mr. Commissioner, whether it operates as a car dealership or a restaurant or any other type of business, the traffic issue would still be there.
I, I don't disagree with you at all. That doesn't mean that I'm gonna support this.
Any other discussion, Commissioners?
My comment is, I, I agree with the staff and I'm able to deny it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny Item Thirty-Six. Cast your votes. It is denied.
Thirty-five.
Oh, I'm thirty-five, I'm sorry. It is thirty-five. Thank you for your time. Let me? No, it's not. Well, if you leave and come back, you need to-
Oh, I didn't.
Yeah.
Item Thirty-Six is S P U D seven-twenty-six. It's an application by Catherine Zapata, Torre Zone Nine Twenty, Southwest Fifty-Ninth Street, from I-one and C-three to S P U D seven-twenty-six in Ward Five. Tell us your name and address, please.
Catherine Zapata, four-seven-seven-four Northwest Twenty-third Street, Apartment One Six Two.
Okay, and you wanna add auto sales to?
Yes, to our auto glass, because we got all the space in the back. We were selling before, but we ran out of our limit for the year.
Commissioners, this is Fifty-Ninth Street?
Yes.
Isn't it, Todd?
Try colors across the street.
Again, I mean, I, I don't, I'm not gonna change my mind, I just think it's not an appropriate location for an auto dealership.
There isn't.
It's, there's not-
Glass shop.
It's a glass shop that's there. This is an application to sell vehicles. Sorry, to add automobile sales.
Now, is there a block to the east, excuse me, west, is that auto sales on the south side of the street?
By Sixtieth or north of us, 'cause here's where I am.
By Klein and Fifty-Ninth Street, east, or west, excuse me, it'd be a block west.
I don't believe so. Um, there's a church right there.
Well, and so, BD twelve-ninety-three is also automobile sales, and I don't know that that's, that's a-
Oh, yeah, that's a used dealership right there. We're gonna have like five, ten cars next, it's just really little, we're not trying to do something huge.
Well, I appreciate and applaud your, um, business enterprise, but I just can't support this, I don't think this is an appropriate location, and I'm gonna move to deny the application.
We have a motion and a second to deny Item Thirty-Six. Cast your votes, and it is denied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we're gonna skip ahead a little bit now. All the subsequent items up until forty-seven have been continued, so Auto, Item Forty-seven is C sixty-five twenty, this is a final plat of Castlewood Trails Edition, Section Two and Ward One.
Chris Anderson, do you agree with the TEs?
I do. Chris Anderson, SMC Engineering, led the staff report, agree with the TEs, ask for approval.
No one's signed up. Move approval. Motion and a second to approve Item Forty-seven. Cast your votes. And you're approved.
Thank you.
We'll do some more skipping. Uh, we're up to Item Fifty-Two now, P U D S P thirteen-eighty-two. An application by Portland Apartment Properties for a specific plan pursuant to P U D thirteen-eighty-two at thirty-six-hundred Northwest One Hundred and Sixty-Fourth Street in Ward Eight.
Hi, I'm Katie Sanchez with AIP, Thirty-two Twenty Marshall Avenue, Norman, Oklahoma. AIP is the architect for Portland Apartment Properties LLC. I'd like to outline a few key design aspects of this specific plan. Initially, we only had the collector road along the south property line providing access to Track A and Track B as required by the P U D. Upon some preliminary meetings with Oklahoma City staff, um, JJ informed us that the planning commission had previously required the collector road to extend to Track C, based on some preliminary plat that Track C had been working on, um, previously. So the design that we have submitted shows this, um, this road on our specific plan. Phase One is what we're submitting for specific plan at this point. Um, it's eleven-point-eight-four acres and will have two-hundred-and-nineteen apartments, which yields about eighteen-and-a-half units per acre. The P U D allows twenty-eight units per acre, so we're nine-and-a-half units per acre under what we're allowed. Phase One requires, based on the Oklahoma City Municipal Code, four-hundred-and-thirty-eight parking spaces. We have provided four-hundred-and-forty-seven, um, and additional landscaping to meet that. And the reason we have additional is because, um, when an apartment complex is at ninety percent occupancy, the minimum code requirement is insufficient to meet the parking needs. So our developer has asked us to supply a few more, um, parking spaces, even though it's not very many more. For the most part, our apartment buildings are as close together as they can be, which is about thirty feet apart to let, provide a level of safety for, um, a fire if there is one. So between the building and the parking separation requirements, there would be insufficient space to provide off-street parking if we are required to make the access to the apartments that comes off Burning Iron Boulevard, a public street. We, so we have that collector road to the south that goes all the way to C, and if we have to create a public street, based on the staff report, um, off that Burning Iron Boulevard, we kind of introduce a couple of, um, additional challenges to the site because we, one, further reduce the density for the site because we have to introduce twenty-five-foot front yard setbacks on either side of that road. We, um, further reduce the amount of parking that we can provide because we're not permitted to have off-street parking on a public road for safety reasons that the, um, planning staff typically follows. And it also creates safety and welfare concerns for the developer, which he can go into.
Which is the developer?
No, he's just helping me out.
Oh, okay.
No, uh, my name is Heath Hollins, I'm with Architects and Partnership also. Ladies and gentlemen, the Commission, appreciate y'all's attention. The point that we wanna make, we've met several times with staff, and no disrespect to their, their comments or concerns with the road, we just don't feel that the road is necessary. Uh, it's not required for zoning, it's not required for code. Uh, it has been a request based on that stub that exists out there to make some sort of extension, uh, but we feel that we could easily prove through a good discussion, why is anyone gonna turn down that street? turn down that street? Why would anyone turn off 164th and think that they can drive through an apartment complex? I don't believe they would. We provided the collector street at the south of the property, and the P.U.D., which we're required to design to, technically doesn't require that collector to extend all the way to Track C. The P.U.D., as written, requires the collector street for Track B and Track A. We made a concession while meeting with staff, realizing that you guys had a substantial amount of heartburn with one of the other tracks, the iron horse that was, or iron stone that was recently done. So, the collector is there, but that took 1.83 acres of developable property from us that we can no longer use. If you require us to put this street in, which we feel should not be a requirement, it's going to kill the deal, basically. You're going to eliminate the opportunity for us to come in and build an apartment complex. The collector street is so much more impactful than just a meandering boulevard, which we intend to provide, because of the right-of-way and the setbacks. The right-of-way and the setbacks are tremendously different. It's 60 foot from center line of road, basically in the other direction. Then you have 25-foot of setback for front yard, because of the way our layout is, the front yard would have butted that road. And the reason it absolutely kills the deal is because you're not allowed to park on a public street. And if you're not allowed to park on a public street, then we're not going to be able to provide enough parking to put the homes in there. And I can guarantee you, the deal's going to die. But the things that I'd like to ask for you guys to think about, just beyond the fact that it should not be required, because it doesn't seem to be a code requirement, is that, from an operational standpoint, we deal with a lot of things that maybe you guys don't think about. Safety, safety, safety is what I want you to think about. This is about safety. The reason this hurts our development is if we introduce a public road, it's going to be a safety issue. It's going to bring people onto our property. We don't think too many people are going to turn down it, but it would bring people onto the property that wouldn't necessarily be there. It would make the homes less desirable for people that want to rent them, and people that want to live there. You're going to have vehicles speeding through a full public street in our property, through homes, when we feel it's unnecessary. Some of the other operational concerns, you know, if someone's parked on that street, it's a public street. I have to call 911, no matter what, to get them removed. They could be loitering, it could be a safety concern for one of our residents, but if it's my property, then I can kick them off immediately. I can have them removed. Bless you. It's also kind of a tidiness concern. You know, having a street or a boulevard that is the main thoroughfare through our property, we're going to maintain it, it's going to be beautiful, it's going to have sidewalks and pedestrian thoroughfares, trees, lighting. We can't maintain it properly if it's a public street. I actually believe that the public designation, as shown on the plat, I'm not saying that maybe it was an error, I think it should have been a public access easement. The public access easement would have been the connection necessary for 160th to the east. It would have provided the proper access necessary for the retail at the corner. I think that's about it. Katie and I would love to answer...
No, please, jump in.
I was speaking with our developer this morning, and he mentioned that there are multiple apartment properties right around Penn and Northwest 122nd, that whole area, and they have a lot of public roads that do cut through the apartment complexes. And he told me, just Google it, Google how much crime there is in those areas, and I was shocked. I mean, there's a high crime rate.
Our developer has, he has about 20 to 30 properties, some in Northwest Oklahoma, or Northwest Oklahoma City even, and he said that the crime rates, crime rates go way up when there's a public street on his property. And the other thing that's very detrimental to him is noise. So, for those reasons, we would ask that the commission support not having a public street through the property. But as shown, we fully intend to, intend, are going to provide a boulevard, or, you know, some thoroughfare for the residents, it's just not a public street. Any questions, maybe, that we could help answer?
Could you help us understand where the, where that north connector street that you were saying you wouldn't, you don't, you would not like to put in? Where's the connector street to the north? Or you stood to the north, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Is that through the actual...
The street, sir, the street would continue down and through our property, regardless...
That's where the parking is in the apartment complex, where you see the parallel parking?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
That would be the street?
And, and, and what's been asked of us by staff is to designate that road, as it comes through, as a public street. In a public street, we're not allowing any parking on it. It requires additional right-of-ways and setback issues that are very, very detrimental to the success of the property.
So, would the stud be to the south, is that what you're saying, at the end of the street?
Well, there's an existing stub on the north end, and we're being required to add this collector road.
Do it like this.
Yeah. Oh, I see. Okay.
See, here's the stub right now that exists, and we're going to extend off of that and come down, and through our property. And this is the collector street, and this collector street connects to the development over here.
Oh, okay.
And this stub is to accept 64th Street right here. It's also to provide access to the rezonary parcel over here. We've left this open to provide access to a future property owner. But what we're asking is that this, from this point, this point should not be a public street.
Okay.
And if there's a code requirement, or a reason, or a regulation that dictates otherwise, I, you know, we'd be open to discuss it.
But as we understand, there is not.
No.
I might say, I mean, I think staff has offered that as an option, but the real issue is you have a large number of vehicles entering the site, so it's a matter of connections. So, if you could redesign the plan so that you don't have that perception of a street, that you have the access, that might solve your problem.
Well, it's the only way off of 164th through the property, sir. And, you know, we're going to have to access, in some fashion, 164th through there, it's required per the P.U.D. And the easement, as encompasses it, can maintain public, it can maintain a public street, or a public access easement, or anything. But at that last line, once our property exists, that's what doesn't make any sense. And if the city's willing to purchase the property from us and install a public street, well, then we'd love to apply.
Staff saw this issue similar to the heart hospital issue that we went through on the, on I-240, with the public street leading into the parking lot and out the other end. The street, public street leading through the complex was one suggestion, another was to maybe move a building over in front, where it's not just a, where I can't pull in Iron Boulevard and look down straight and see the collector, and it appears that there's a straight shot through the, through the complex. So, rearranging the buildings a little bit would certainly help, but the street is not in that, and we were insisting on the street.
It's just our experience, if there's a perception that it's a street, it is, it is used as a street, and that's not going to serve your clients, and it's going to create a dangerous situation. So, I would suggest a redesign.
Could, and, and, and I appreciate that, and if we can table this for 30, 45 days, two weeks, whatever, we're 100% agreeable to that. What I would ask, if I could, what if we do a masonry wall on either side of that street to provide a pseudo-visual barrier, like you're talking about? So, kind of, it'll be a signage to, it'll have a sign, and it'll say, you know, you can say, "Do not enter," if you want. But any type of brick wall that runs all the way across there, still allows the street to go through, would provide that. Worst-case scenario, if we were required to, I guess the worst, in last concession, we would ask for, would, if, would a gate work? You know, and a gate's somewhat pseudo-problematic, just maintenance-wise, but if that would help you guys in the decision, the gate, of course, would, you know, provide that barrier. And I apologize, we may not be able to just take that recommendation and go, we may have to come back to J.J., I'm not sure, so...
One of the, one of the, part of the staff's objection was parking back into the access drive that you were talking about.
Sir.
Creates an unsafe situation. I just, for your consideration, when you come back, there's a lot of communities now that are adopting a back-end, instead of you pull in, you know, head-first, but there's a diagonal back-end, so that when you are getting out, you can look both ways, and you just go out, like a lot of people back up. We were, I mean, there was one, the street in Baltimore, for example, there's another, I mean, there's many communities now that are adopting this back-end parking, which is kind of unique, but that's kind of the, that would solve the problem of what they're getting into, an unsafe situation, when you back up into this street going this way, if you're heading out, well, you can see both ways, and it, it kind of eliminates that. So, that's just for your consideration, perhaps, you know, a back-end parking instead of a front bumper parking.
I believe that's only a concern when it's a public, when it's a public...
Well, that's what, well, when you come back, I don't, you know, we don't know what you're going to come back with.
Yes, sir. Understood.
So, kind of put that in the mix, that's all I'm suggesting. So, I'll move to continue this for, what, 30 days?
Two weeks would be great.
Two weeks?
Do you think that's... Two weeks would be great, sir.
Okay, for the next meeting.
September 26th. That's what I'm, my motion. All right, we have a motion and a second to continue item 52 to our next meeting. Cast your votes. It's approved.
Okay, item 53 is an ordinance for public hearing that amends Chapter 59 of the Code. This relates to the maximum height of components within electrical substations.
My name is Dennis Box, and I'm here on behalf of OGN-E. This would allow for them to allow, within their substations, communication between the different substations, and then OGN-E. It will not be used for purposes of allowing, you know, other telecommunication facilities to operate, and we would ask for your approval. Mrs. Killian is here, an engineer with OGN-E. If you all have any questions of her.
Need a motion to approve the amendment?
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 53. Cast your votes.
I have an answer?
You can still ask it.
If we approve this, does this mean you can just put up cell phone towers wherever you want to?
No, this is just within substations.
But within your substation, you can put up cell phone towers?
Yes, this will allow their communication, and there are a number of facilities that have now, and within the, within the different substations, you already have, you know, tall facilities, so we don't think it'll have any negative impact in regards to surrounding areas, but this allows them to tile their communication in.
Would you still have to meet the requirements for, like, fall radius and all that sort of thing? I mean, what, I, I'm curious, I guess I'm concerned about how far we're going here by approving this, you know, seemingly innocuous amendment.
Well, you're only approving it for a height of 70 feet. Right now, you could go 50 feet, so 70 feet is, is what, what they would need in regard to allowing the right height for, you know, the communication poles, but 70 feet is as tall as the ordinance will allow, so it's not, you know, like you're getting into the scenario where, when I bring applications before you dealing with cell towers, and sometimes they're 120 feet or 190 feet. This, this is cap.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, item 54 is another ordinance for public hearing, amending Chapter 59 of the Code, and this regard is regarding outdoor sales in the area around the Oklahoma City Memorial and Federal Building.
We're, we're approving the amendment.
This is the final, this is the hearing.
This is the final, this is the vote to approve the amendment.
So moved to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 54. Cast your votes. It's approved.
Item 55 is introduction of an ordinance for public hearing for September the 26th, amending the Code, Chapter 59 again, and this relates to P.U.D.s and S.P.U.D.s.
We need a motion to set.
So moved.
Okay, cast your votes, and we have set that for two weeks.
And item 56 is a resolution that receives the Midtown Urban Renewal Plan and amends the comprehensive plan to determine that the Midtown Urban Renewal Plan is in conformance with the comp plan as amended. Recommending its approval to the City Council.
Not to hurt your feelings, but we're going to take about a five or 10-minute break, we've been sitting here since one o'clock.
So moved. Did you want to, you want to hear, are you doing a presentation, or you just want to do a Q&amp;A on this, Julie? Because you did...
We got a pretty good presentation from Kathy earlier today.
You want more?
Skip the slideshow? All right, we'll, we'll...
All right. Yeah. All right, let's go forward then. Sorry, Dennis.
That's right.
I just thought we were close.
I, you know, I really think that Kathy was pretty clear that the reason she was speaking as an abbreviated version was because we can begin in a more, I know it's called succeed, but...
Well, I think the intent, Hollins was going to do it, correct?
And but Ace is going to do it?
If you want to do it. It's up to you guys.
And if there are areas that you'd like us to focus on?
If you want to do a more expanded presentation, we will take a five-minute break. It's, it's up to the commission.
Well, I, I had a meeting with Kathy, and, I mean, you know, and we went through the whole thing, really in detail, on a one-on-one, so I've heard it all before.
Well, I had that too, but not everybody did.
Well, I know, but I've got to meet Sydney for dinner.
You also have to vote.
Okay, okay, that's fine. If I have any wondering questions, I'll call you.
Okay, you're on.
Thank you for having us this evening. The Midtown Urban...
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Dustin Akers, I'm with the Alliance for Economic Development, 200 Northeast 2nd Street. The Midtown Urban Renewal Plan is an update to the North Downtown Redevelopment Plan that was developed in the mid-'90s in response to the bombing, in an effort to assist with recovery and redevelopment, as well as the potential for St. Anthony's to leave the area, and so it provided some concepts to, to assist with St. Anthony staying in the Midtown area. With all of the positive redevelopment that's been occurring in Midtown, we wanted to identify what was still holding it back from reaching its full potential, so we were taking a look and updating the North Downtown Redevelopment Plan. We have renamed it the Midtown Urban Renewal Plan, just because it has more namesake in the boundaries, and that's the name that people associate with the area. So, the boundaries are from Northwest 4th Street to Northwest 13th Street, Classen Drive, and the BNS rail line. It is the same boundaries as the original plan, so this is just an amendment to update the current conditions and recommendations. And to go over those recommendations, Asa Highsmith with Bitzer Gardner Architects is here to go over some of the planning concepts.
It seems like we're almost on the cusp of getting into the full presentation, so, again, we can do that, but if you guys would rather, you know, ask us any questions, we'd be happy to go from there.
I don't have any questions, unfortunately. I've heard the presentation in some detail, so I understand it, and I, I think it's an excellent job, but...
I'm Leslie Bachelor, counsel to the Oklahoma City Urban Renewal Authority. One thing that Kathy O'Connor mentioned to me that wasn't included in the briefings were the specific urban renewal actions that are contemplated, and what authorizations are in there, so I could briefly touch on those. One of the things that we're seeking to do in this plan is engage more with existing property owners, instead of sort of the traditional pattern of either Okura's involved, in which case it goes out and acquires the land and completely does the redevelopment. We think the world is shifting to a place where looking for ways to incentivize and encourage the better means of development might be more efficient, and would generate the sort of organic development that we already see in Midtown, and that we could better support that. So, the plan authorizes Okura to basically do six things, to form public-private partnerships to achieve the objectives of the... To form public-private partnerships to achieve the objectives of the plan, to negotiate and adopt owner participation agreements, so we work with the existing landowner to help them redevelop their own property in accordance with the goals of the plan. We want to encourage more rehabilitation of existing building stock. We think that's one of the real assets of Midtown that gives it its character, and we'd like to support that. We think that having Ocure act as sort of a coordinating entity between the city staff, including planning and public works, and the private developers in the area, would help better prioritize some of the public works investments that the city plans already to make. We'd also like to provide assistance in development financing to those projects that needed to really achieve the goals of the plan. And finally, when and where necessary, to really catalyze development, we would engage in the traditional acquisition and disposition of property under redevelopment agreements. So that's the focus of the urban renewal actions.
Leslie, when you talk about working with, with existing property owners, you're talking about these agreements, you're talking about working with people in a situation where property is not changing hands. I mean, people who are there, who've been there, who are going to continue to be there, but nonetheless are bringing them into the fold in terms of the vision for the future of the area and so forth. What, what would that involve in terms of the, the trade-off?
I, I think you can sometimes see more of a carrot approach, and sometimes there's a stick involved. I mean, there are codes to enforce, there is design review in the area. We would like to move more towards a form-based code set of requirements. And we think it's appropriate that where the city is investing public money, either through, you know, MAPS III investments like the streetcar, or, you know, new street resurfacing and sidewalks and things, that there ought to be a corresponding private investment. And sometimes that happens on its own naturally. And sometimes we see places where the city invests a whole lot of money, and, and the private land either sits there fallow, or people are just, you know, speculating. So I can see situations in which you have the carrot of the public investments, where it's explicit, or places where you say, if, if you're at a streetcar stop, we are going to expect a certain level of development in that area. And if you're not prepared to do that, we think it's important to find someone who can. How much we'll be able to do that, I don't know. Obviously, the, the political pressure for not using eminent domain is always pretty strong.
So Leslie, are we be entering into redevelopment agreements, both for properties that you have, have access to and to the private properties?
Yes. I think we'll see some slimmed-down, sort of streamlined redevelopment agreements for folks where we're not the owners and disposing of the property to them. And we're, we're already developing a couple of new models, where we're using federal funds to encourage, like, affordable housing in Bricktown. So some of them will be effectively loan agreements, where we require certain performances by the developer. So sometimes they'll be, you know, if you want this incentive, then you're going to need to develop in this way. So I think that'll be most of them. But we might see places where, you know, we have some really good property owners in the area, and they may be willing to step up as an example and say, "Here's what I'm going to do in the public realm. You know, I'm going to ensure that we have a certain amount of green space, you know, along our property," or whatever the public good may be that we need at that location. Because we have a lot of folks who want to work with one another. We have some institutional owners, like OC Law coming in, and I think they will want to work with, with us and with nearby owners to make good things happen.
Thanks.
What about the financial assistance you were talking about? What, where, how will that work for people in the area?
Well, I think it'll be a continuation of the city's TIF program that they've got. And for TIF 2, all of this is in the city's downtown TIF. But there's times where that effort is not as closely joined to the city's planning objectives as I think would be ideal. So I'm hoping that by improving communications there, and frankly, just having this plan in existence, we can better articulate a vision for the area. And people will wonder, "Well, why would we help a project that's not really the kind of development that will best serve the area?"
Okay. Thank you.
Will we move to approve it, or we move to adopt it?
We are to receive this, and then to amend the master plan to incorporate this document.
That's my motion.
That's your motion?
Yes.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Well, James made it a motion. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, we are receiving the Midtown Redevelopment Plan and amending the master plan. Cast your votes. It is done. Thank you.
Thank you all for sitting through a very long meeting. Give us that information.
So we do have an additional, we do have an additional item, which is PC 10350. It doesn't have a variance, though. This is an application by Meadows 61 to rezone 15912 North MacArthur from PUD 248 to R1 Single Family in Ward 8.
And I'm the only one with a staff report.
I'm Jason Spencer with Craft and Toll, here with the applicant. Keep it brief, this application was to rezone 15 acres from a PUD with R1-based zoning to stray R1 zoning. It's on the east side of MacArthur, South 164th Street. We're basically seeking to clean up the zoning in this area. A majority of the original PUD's been rezoned to R1, and it doesn't really apply anymore. And in fact, there was a TE in the, TE number two from the staff report of the approved preliminary plat states that this property is to be rezoned to R1 during or prior to consideration of a final plat. And that's basically why we're here today. It was continued from the last meeting for the applicant to meet with the homeowner association. That meeting did take place. Staff has recommended this item for approval. And if you have any questions for myself or the applicant, we'd be happy to address
Kind of hard to do without a staff report, isn't it?
Are there TEs or anything like that?
No TEs.
No protests?
No protests. Recommendation for approval by the staff?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve number, whatever, additional item number one. I guess is how it's on the agenda. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go through this real fast. Planning Commission committees, members, planning department.
We have, just a reminder, there is, there's a symposium where we bring all the consultants that have been supporting the development of a comprehensive plan to town on November the first, so.
And that is.
That'll be in, in the Hall of Mirrors, and it'll be from 1 till 6.
Oh, that's right, that is on our agenda.
Just to make sure that you have that. Several reminders.
All right. Municipal counselor? Development services?
Yes, sir.
I have something for you. Thank you all. Long day.